Okay. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Fahey.
Here.
Alderman Melumbway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Hallman.
Here.
Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to go ahead and start with, under recognitions and appointments, a presentation by McLean County Health Department, Community Health Needs Assessment results, and I believe Tom Daybriner is going to introduce our guest.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be a two-parter, and we're going to squeeze it into 10 minutes. Sally Gambit-Corta is the Community Health Manager for Advocate Broman. She was part of the team conducting the assessment that you're about to hear about, and she will highlight some of the findings from the Community Health Needs Assessment. And I'm going to wrap it up with a little bit on investment health and maybe a song. We'll see how much time we have.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to present on the overview and findings of the assessment this evening. I appreciate it. We're excited about this assessment because in the past, the four organizations listed up there, Broman Medical Center, McLean County Health Department, OSF St. Joseph Medical Center, and United Way, conducted the assessment separately, resulting in different health plans for our community. So we feel that this is a great opportunity for our community because this resulted in one assessment for our community, which is posted, one joint report is posted on all four of our websites. We looked at the data collectively and reached consensus on the top three health needs for our community, and we will be working collaboratively on implementation plans and interventions for our community, which we feel, like I said, is the best thing for it, best thing. We will be working with social service agencies and a variety of other organizations. We looked at a variety of data in order to come up with the top three health needs. We conducted a community survey, and we had a great response with over 800 community members filling out the survey. Important note is that almost 300 of those were from low income or underserved, which we felt was very important. We also looked at hospital data from both Broman and OSF, which was primarily emergency room data. We were also able to access zip code and county level data and data from a variety of other sources. It actually was a lot more than 12, but we have 12 down there. And our analysis found great disparities based on geography. This is a map of McLean County, and you'll notice the areas that are shaded in darker color there. There are four zip codes. For this evening, we're going to be focusing on the one in yellow there. And what this map represents is areas of high socioeconomic need based on six different factors. Those factors are poverty, income, education, unemployment, language. And so again, this represents areas of high socioeconomic need. This puts individuals that, if they live in these zip codes, this puts them at higher risk for having greater, worse health outcomes. In order to come up with the top three health priorities, the Executive Steering Committee looked at all of the vast amount of data that we had, and we found that there were about 13 health issues that rose to the top in McLean County. So we gave the McLean County Community Health Council, which consisted of 13 organizations in our community and 33 individuals. The organizations ranged from social service agencies to schools to the city of Bloomington, to the McLean County Regional Planning Commission. So we provided them with robust data on each of the 13 health issues. They then looked at that, narrowed it down to the top six issues after discussion. Then they used a nationally recognized prioritization technique and narrowed it down to the top three health issues, which you'll see there. Behavioral health, which includes both mental health and substance abuse, access to appropriate care for underserved populations, and obesity. So it wasn't something that the four organizations came up with. We did get a lot of input from the community. Some of the key findings related to those top three health issues were behavioral health. From the survey respondents, 10% who needed mental health counseling reported that they weren't able to access it. Low-income individuals and renters reported more poor mental health days. We had high incidence of adult suicide and intentional self-inflicted injury for African-Americans, and emergency visits in McLean County is in the worst 50th to 75th percentile for self-suicide and intentional self-inflicted injury, and pediatric mental health. We feel that this is an important slide. This is some information we were not able to access during our previous CHNA that we were able to get this time. For zip code 61701, that you can see right around just under two times and around two times, the emergency room visits are happening from zip code 61701 in comparison to McLean County for adult asthma, alcohol abuse, diabetes, and substance abuse. That's where some of the geographic disparities are occurring. And for some of the racial and ethnic disparities are occurring for African-Americans or blacks. Nearly four times as many emergency room visits are occurring for heart failure, pediatric asthma. Nearly six times as many emergency room visits are occurring in comparison to other racial and ethnic groups for adult asthma, and just under three times for alcohol abuse. This is my last slide before I turn the presentation over to Tom. Grocery store density in McLean County. We have a lot of grocery stores in McLean County, however, 61701 does remain a food desert, which I'm sure you're all aware of. And for the survey respondents who reported that they do not eat fruits and vegetables, they said they were too difficult to buy. And from McLean County, there are fewer farmer markets and more fast food restaurants per 1,000 population in comparison to other U.S. counties. Those with a high school diploma only have higher rates of obesity at 42%. And then 122 miles of Bloomington sidewalks are 25% rated fair in comparison to failed. And in summary, what we would like to do with our collaborative is focus not only on health and chronic health conditions, but also some of the social determinants of health, particularly in underserved areas. And I will turn it over to Tom unless you have any questions for me, or if you would like to wait until Tom does his presentation, then we can take them all at once.
Going also. Tom?
Okay. And the other, the team members of the collaborative are all here this evening as well, so everybody is here from all the organizations if you do have questions for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. I'm going to talk briefly about the Invest Health program because all of the data that you just saw really impressed the people, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the Reinvestment Fund, which is another foundation. When we applied for the grant that is basically training us, the members of the collaborative who are all, why don't you raise your hand? And they were, those are the four organizations that were mentioned earlier. Just to back up a little bit, a few years ago, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation joined forces with the Center for Disease Control and took a look, took a close look at, you know, what are some of the physical obstacles, the physical factors, the physical environment that is serving as a barrier towards good health care, healthy foods and the like. They found a relationship, a very strong relationship, and their next step then is what we're in. It's called Invest Health. And this is an attempt to help 50 mid-sized communities, including Bloomington, because we did win at this stage of the game, to help reduce those physical barriers, the built environment concerns. And that's why we're even talking about this. But that's, the Community Health Needs Assessment data was really key in helping to convince the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and Reinvestment Fund that we were ahead of many other communities in this regard and that we deserve some attention. Not surprisingly, our focus mirrors the Community Health Needs Assessment with behavioral health, access to primary care, and obesity. And we came up with a couple goals initially, and that is to support healthy behaviors with improved access to healthy foods in the zip code 61701, and then also look for ways to improve access to primary care. There is a series of national and regional conferences and workshops that are completely paid for by this grant, so it's not costing the city anything for me to attend. At these meetings, we receive some guidance as to how to develop financing tools and really proceed in trying to meet our goals for this list, these lists of healthy food access and primary care access. And hopefully, fingers crossed, we're going to continue to proceed and make progress. This is an 18-month-long process, and we will, of course, be bringing periodic updates to you as the time goes on. That 18 months started in the spring. It was a $60,000 grant, $60,000 grant awarded. That covers travel for, and hotels, et cetera, for the five team members. I have 23 seconds, so I'll stop.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Daybriner. Thanks for coming in under budget, by the way. Uh, so excuse me.
I don't really have a question. I just want to thank you, and I hope you'll involve me a little bit more because I think I'm probably representing the largest area in 61701. So, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. At this point, we will move on to Sally Heffernan from the Be an Advantage Steering Committee. And Sally, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And Alderman, it's very nice to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about Be an Advantage. This is the first time we've been here, so I hope it's not certainly the last. I'm here this evening as the project manager for Be an Advantage. Brought with me four members of the leadership council, or I'm sorry, of the steering committee. The mayor's on the leadership council. On the steering committee, we have Vesu Pinamiraju, Kyle Hamm, Crystal Howard, and Andrew Johnson are here. And I also should point out that I believe Diana Hallman is on the Quality of Life/Quality of Place Task Force. So we have some involvement, and we appreciate that. One of the questions we get is, why now? Why is, do we need an economic development effort in McLean County? I think you were probably all here when McLean County was experiencing explosive growth. It wasn't how many houses we're going to have, but how are we going to control the number of houses that people want to build here? And that went on until the recession that we all experienced in 2008. And we've recovered a little bit from that, but we still have some very concerning indicators. There were 220 family, single-family houses built last year in 2015. In 2005, there were over 700. 2,000 individuals left our labor market between 2014 and 2015. Air passenger ridership at Central Illinois Regional Airport is down 32% over five years. 12 of the top 22 employers in McLean County are public institutions, government, or not-for-profits that are dependent on the state of Illinois. That's not a good thing, at this particular point in time especially. And nearly half of McLean County's private sector wages and salaries come from a single economic sector, and that's finance and insurance. Additionally, other regions are embarking on advanced economic development activities similar to Be an Advantage. Decatur is working on something called Limitless Decatur, and maybe some of you have seen that advertised. It's funded by the Howard G. Buffett Foundation and supported by a lot of local businesses, public and private, in Decatur. Q2030 is one I'm very familiar with. I worked in economic development in the Quad Cities for 13 years. And Q2030 is an ambitious economic development effort in both the Illinois and Iowa Quad Cities involving community leaders and task forces, very similar to what we're doing with Be an Advantage. Mississippi River Counties of Clinton, Iowa, and Whiteside County. Whiteside County happens to be where I had my first economic development job. Fairly small population of 100,000 people, they've raised almost $3 million for an economic development effort there. So even with some declining indicators and competitions from other regions, we believe that McLean County is still in a good position to build on our strengths, which include 50% of our region's adults have an associate's degree or higher. We're very well educated here. 43% of our residents have bachelor's or advanced degrees, and our median household income is just over 6, under $62,000, which is still ahead of the national average of $53,500. We need to exploit our assets to increase our economic base, and we need to start now before we lose more ground. Be an Advantage brings together community leaders, subject matter experts, and residents of diverse backgrounds to tackle strategies that lead to the attainment of the plan's goals and move McLean County's economy forward. And so we're here tonight to tell you about the progress and the plans that are being made by the Be an Advantage task forces that have been meeting for about nine months now. The first task force is the Talent and Workforce, a task force led by the McLean County Chamber. It's a first-of-its-kind initiative for our region, brings together educators from preschool through advanced degrees, all the right people in the room, our school superintendents, our Heartland Community College president, Representative ISU, as I mentioned, preschools. And they're looking at training programs that will help us train students for the jobs that will be available in McLean County in the future, and some that are available, of course, in McLean County now that can be filled by the present workforce. The outcome of that task force will be education and training programs will provide a consistent supply of skilled, trained workers to our employers in the region. The Be an Advantage budget, which I understand is in your packet, includes a full-time workforce development manager and a part-time program coordinator to be housed at the chamber. Entrepreneurship is the second task force. Conventional and non-conventional lenders, business advisors, and successful small business owners are creating financing opportunities, providing advisory and mentorship programs to give business startups assistance and the encouragement they need to succeed. The Be an Advantage budget includes a full-time entrepreneurship director to be housed at the Economic Development Council. Quality of Life/Quality of Place is the third task force. Three teams from the task force with representatives from diverse backgrounds and across the region are going to address innovation, project implementation, and solutions to cultural and income disparity. And the outcome of that will be implementation of fresh ideas and emulation of best practices from other regions to create an innovative community attractive to a talented and diverse workforce. A grants manager will be hired to research and seek grant funding for the chosen initiatives. Indicators and metrics. Experts in the field have chosen an initial set of metrics to be tracked based on the goals in the Be an Advantage plan. Data platforms and software options are under consideration. So what that will do is provide a base of economic indicators, and periodically that will be updated. So on an ongoing basis, we can see how well Be an Advantage is performing, and of course, report that back to you. The budget includes a part-time employee to be housed at regional planning for initial setup and ongoing maintenance of data. Marketing communications, and this may be our most important task force. Communication professionals from throughout the region have created a brand identity for Be an Advantage and McLean County. They're creating a new website. They're launching multiple social media platforms and crafting a local marketing campaign. Particularly in the Midwest, we find that communities are not, they're reluctant to brag about their attributes, and we're, I think, guilty of that. We need to get ourselves out there more. We need to tell people the advantages of Bloomington Normal. The outcome of this task force will be the region's image is enhanced through selective marketing and promotion of regional assets and successes to a national and international audience. The BNA budget includes a halftime marketing director to be shared with the Economic Development Council. The task forces have taken the Be an Advantage effort as far as they can without funding. Tackling all the strategies in the Be an Advantage plan will require a budget of just under $1 million. The leadership council, made up of leaders, including the mayor, the mayor of Normal, our county board chairman, business concerns, leaders of business throughout the county, has agreed to a 75-25% split, with 75% coming from the private sector and the remaining 25% from the public sector. We aren't here tonight to formally request funding, but that ask will be coming in the future. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to present, and if you have any questions, perhaps for me or for one of the steering committee members that are here.
Questions of Sally or others who are in the committee, actually quite a few in the audience.
I just appreciate the update and having you come and share what's been happening.
Thank you. Yeah. Anything else? See, none. Thank you so much, and thanks for the work you're doing, Sally. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care. Next, we're going to move to public comment. We'll start out, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I went through the, we have three appointments, but one of those I'm going to be pulling at the request of the appointee. Mr. Levi Sturgeon has requested that he stay on his current committee rather than move to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. So we do have, is Alicia Whitworth in the audience? Alicia, if you'd stand. And Michael Butts? Michael's not here. Thank you, Alicia, for your willingness to serve. Thanks. No, thank you again. At this point, we move to public comment. You have up to three minutes, and I will go ahead and announce that we have, let's see, five people who want to come forward. Again, you have up to about three minutes. If you want to directly get answers in real time, I have a mayor's open house every Friday before a Monday city council meeting. Come back, right over about the fishbowl, and come from 4:30 to 5:30. Don't have to make an appointment. Usually, there's a deputy city manager, a city manager there. We can sometimes not only get you answers in real time, but even solve some of your problems in real time. And if you'd like to interact with others, that would be fine. That's not the purpose of public comment. Public comment is pretty much open mic, unfiltered. Generally speaking, the most successful and most productive comments are those that have positive solutions. So we'd certainly encourage those, but it's certainly up to you. At this point, we have Bruce Meeks, Donna Boland, and RJ Whitworth.
I've already sent you an email with some problems and solutions, so we won't go into all that tonight. I'm sure there'll be a future meeting where we can talk about the liquor commission and retaining it with citizens on that commission, and with that being driven by the council and not by a single person. A lot of the things in the regular agenda kind of surprised me that they showed up so quickly. I didn't see them on the committee of the whole agenda. I guess, I guess you guys have abandoned the idea of having more discussions at the committee of the whole before you bring it directly to the council. But on item 8A, I thought we were going to do a codification overall. It would've been nice to include what is being attempted here with the overall codification together to integrate the two, because I do believe you're going to find in the code a lot of things that will overlap. On the Tiff district, I don't think you have enough data from what the Friedman group was telling you just a few days ago, and you don't have a market survey, you don't have anything like the 1965 study, which showed the vacant square footage of downtown. I'm not sure you've really decided what the boundary is yet, other than what you've got proposed tonight. I think it's a little bit too soon, and maybe that should go back to the committee of the whole for some really in-depth discussion. Right here, we got $5 million extra this year. Well, you approved, I think it was this budget or the one before, a write-off. You, the council, approved a write-off of $2.4 million of taxpayers' money, you call it revenue, that never got paid back. It was a loan to the Coliseum. How about we give the water department back their money? They've got nitrogen issues, they've got to find us some water we need to drink. I think water's a pretty high priority for the city to keep it economically feasible. Or we could have bought an empty building for $2.5 million. If we'd known soon enough, we could have bought Mitsubishi, and we would have had flight control over Mitsubishi. The problem I always see some of the other items on the agenda is I don't see a lot of citizen input planned. That would be the KM in design. There was presentations made to the signings group. Those presentations were never posted or available to the public to see, to compare for themselves. But I think we really should really think about, maybe, maybe take that $5 million, and maybe y'all should get a raise. Maybe you should start paying liquor commissioners like they do in other cities. Hey, let's be open-minded. Let's spend it right, though. Oh, wait a minute. How about we lower some taxes, about $5 million?
Okay. Next is Donna Boland, RJ Whitworth, and then Gary Lambert.
Hi, I'm Donna Boland. I live in Ward 2. I'm just here to comment on a statement that was made last Monday using a graphic on page 36 of the comprehensive plan related to the loss of tax dollars downtown. And what I noticed in that graphic is that it actually covers two-and-a-half-mile radius from the downtown core, which includes the space from Veterans to the east, Hamilton to the south, and I-74 to the west, which is really rather a large area. And it includes neglected economic and depressed neighborhoods, a lot of tax-exempt property, including churches, Illinois Wesleyan schools, hospitals, parks, zoo, golf, and 30% of the downtown land area is government-owned. And according to the comprehensive plan, it's just the active, an active urban core that includes not only the downtown, but the regenerative, regeneration and the preservation areas is what's vital. It's not just the boundaries of the downtown. And Fox Creek was also mentioned. Yes, it's helped the boonies, but half of that land area is publicly owned with the golf course and parks and schools. There is an option or a possibility for infill, which may help that area. And then the Grove was a mistake. I'm sorry, it was a mistake. But then you look at the West Market area, and they have a deficit of $2,400. And it's commercial, industrial, economically depressed, crime-ridden, unincorporated property, and the metro zone is out there, and we're handing $1,000 over to Normal with that. So I just wanted to kind of give a big picture. I appreciate you bringing that up, but it's more involved than just the downtown area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next again, RJ Whitworth, Gary Lambert, and Patricia Martin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm RJ Whitworth. I'm here tonight, along with some of my fellow Bike Blow No members, to show support for the Complete Streets program. We know it's being considered, and we are recreational and transportation users of the infrastructure, and hope that you will support it also. We're hoping that it will include non-classified streets, not just main arteries and feeder streets. On a personal note, as a senior citizen, I know I won't see a lot of the results that come out of a complete street ordinance or policy, but I have a two-year-old, nearly two-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter in Bloomington that I'd like her to have a great infrastructure, sidewalks, bike lanes, wheelchair access if ever needed. As she grows up, she will be attending Washington School, and I've been by there in the mornings and seen what a mess that is, and a complete streets program can help straighten things like that out. So that is on a personal note. I hope we can get your support, and a lot of us out there are not just cyclists, we support complete streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Lambert and Patricia Martin.
Speaking of complete streets, I sat in on the June 20 presentation, committee of the One of the items listed in there, there is no additional work for planners, architects, and engineers foreseen in this plan. However, the type of work would change. Another bold item in that presentation is the misconception that complete streets cost more to build than normal streets, when in fact, complete streets cost no more and many times can cost less. At our Friday mayorial meeting, an individual brought up the topic of bikes, and the cost was described as inconsequential, is a few gallons of paint.
was described as inconsequential, as a few gallons of paint. I see in tonight's staff responses, the city does anticipate additional resources needed for this implementation in the coming years, both from a staff and infrastructure standpoint. And in reading through it quickly, if this is passed, it's mandatory, subject to the city manager's disapproval. You're biting off a big chunk. And the real laugher was a comment in the presentation, skinny streets, more pleasurable for all users. If we could just get rid of those nasty four-lane roads and reduce them to two lanes, I'm sure those automobile users will really be pleased. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Martin.
I was happy to see Mr. Steve Rasmussen, our Assistant City Manager, at the Front Street bus stop area by the Law and Justice Center last week, preparing for the music fest. I hope this can continue in the future, as the area in and around the two bus shelters is usually very dirty, smelly, and congested, and is often used for purposes other than that for which it was intended. Though there are trash cans in the area, they are dark-colored and not really noticeable. I think that they would probably be more noticeable if they were painted red, for example, especially to those who might be bleary-eyed from work or from entertainment. Another suggestion would be to post police and connect transit telephone numbers in the booths for emergency situations. Two weeks ago, when I was in one of the shelters, the police were called by a connect transit driver and came to investigate the possible use of alcohol. The officers came in pairs, they were very polite, asking those in the area, including myself, if we were being bothered by the person in question, and removed the alcohol before going away. So Chief Hefner should be very proud of his officers and their conduct. The changes in the bus routes could well lead to more congestion, and I hope connect transit will add yet another stop not far away to prevent any further overcrowding. The next stop is now several blocks away, which can cause problems for those of us who can't always walk long distances, as well as for anyone during inclement weather. Mr. Rasmussen has also indicated that he will look into the traffic situation on East Street between Front and Olive, as he and I have had similar problems crossing a designated walk painted on the street itself. I hope he will do so, because the cars don't know there is a painted walk, and they come down the street and around a curve at a speed that could kill anybody who gets in their way. And this is the area going from the back of the parking lot to the McBarnes Building. Perhaps the walk should be painted over, or a prominent sign placed in the area as a warning. And then finally, the Jazz Fest turned into the, was turned out to be a really real community celebration. It was an intergenerational one, not just music, but dancing in the streets, grandparents and grandchildren dancing together, and I hope we will have a similar music fest next year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Patricia. Moving on now to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Oh, okay. Start with Alderman Painter.
I'd like to remove F, because I need to recuse myself.
Oh, okay. Seven F? What are you pulling?
F.
F? Okay.
Yes, I, I generate garbage at David Davis Mansion.
Oh, okay. So you're pulling item seven F. Okay. All right.
Seven H shall also be recusing.
Seven H for, actually, let me write all these down. Okay. And Burgess, recusal seven H.
I was going to pull seven H.
Seven H?
Yes.
Oh.
I was going to pull it, too.
To recuse yourself or for questions?
No, to vote.
To vote?
Yeah. I don't want it on the.
Okay, so we are pulling seven H.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, and tagging on to what Johnny said, I was going to pull seven F. I have some questions and comments about that. Okay, right. So we have the two that we're pulling, and multiple people have suggested these, is seven F, as in Frank, and seven H, as in Herman.
Harry.
Harry. Okay, okay. Being French, you're not that familiar with Hs, though, right? You don't pronounce them.
Actually, Mayor, the correct alphanumeric language includes hotel, so, thanks.
Okay. Let's see. Alderman Fruen, did you have something to pull to?
I would like to pull seven D, as in David.
Seven D. Okay. So we have seven D, F, and H, but I'll do it in the order in which they were pulled, F, H, and D. Okay? Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. Make the motion to approve as presented, except for seven D, F, and H. Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Okay. And I want to go ahead and vote on that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a point. I assume that that motion also includes the modification, item C, of deleting the appointment of Levi Sturgeon to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioner.
Oh, yes, thank you. With the, also the clarification of deleting the appointment of Mr. Levi Sturgeon, who had requested that his name be removed. Okay. Alderman Fruen?
Mayor, I, with regard to the consent and regular agenda, I have not received any financial benefits from the organizations or individuals referenced in these agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, then, I is in favor of the consent agenda as presented, with the exceptions that were removed. Okay. It should be now. Okay. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and so we will pull these in the order in which they were presented. Item seven F, Alderman Painter wanted to recuse herself, and I believe there were some other questions. Okay. Alderman.
Yeah, and let me start by saying I'm supportive of assisting the Davis Mansion with this. My question is more process-based, and to simply, to ask the question, I'm trying to understand how this came to be on the agenda.
Well, essentially, according to the ordinance, the city manager and I agreed to put it on the agenda. But I think, Mr. Pales, if you want to clarify, I believe Alderman Burgess had come with some concerns, some other citizens had some concerns, and then I believe in light of
the David Davis Mansion. And the David Davis Mansion.
In light of the fact that the History Museum is opening, looking for Lincolns, directing people to the David Davis Mansion, and also in light of the fact that, obviously, we're getting our first multimillion-dollar investment on Constitution Trail right there. It seemed to be a strategic location. I don't think we even talked about not putting it on the consent agenda, and again, it might have been, you know, an error.
Have we talked about this previously at a council meeting?
No, not that I know of. I mean, unless council members have talked about it internally. It's not dissimilar, I think, to the bike, was it, the group that Alderman Schmidt and Black had suggested, what was that group, Out to the West Side?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that there were some issues there. It turned out that that wasn't feasible, but certainly, certainly, you're, as policymakers, you're certainly able to suggest things, and if they seem to have a broader, you know, public interest, then we certainly can put them on.
Yeah, so my concern is that, again, and it's more the principle in the situation rather than the agenda item itself, and that is, is we're changing policy, and we've not had the opportunity to talk about this as a council. We have a process for, if an alderman wants to put an item on the agenda, we have a process in place for doing that. Again, I think it's important that we have some conversation amongst ourselves prior to something going on, the agenda item, when it involves a policy change. I think that's, you know, a bad practice when we don't do that.
But the thing that we've done until very recently is what, you know, metro cities throughout Illinois do, and that is, you could, that's one way you can do it. The other thing is, you can ask the mayor and city manager to put it on the agenda. I mean, and that's part of the separation of powers process.
Yeah, and I think you're missing the point here. The point is, is that when we're changing a policy, I think it's a good practice to have conversation as a council before we do that, as opposed to just arbitrarily putting something on the agenda.
Okay, well, I don't think this is arbitrarily put on. I think it was a long process of thinking about it, but it is, it is certainly the prerogative of an executive to put things on an agenda, and you talk about them. I mean, this one happened to be on the consent agenda, but if it were really controversial, it would be on the regular agenda, and then we'd talk about it. We certainly can't talk about everything in committee at the whole before we bring it to the council.
When we're talking about changing ordinance, changing policy, it's bad practice to not have the council discuss that ahead of time.
Well, I think we just have to agree to disagree. I would, I would recommend that we all go to the Illinois Municipal League, National League of Cities, and see how that this is pretty standard practice throughout, frankly, the United States. So I just disagree. Alderman Burgess, I think you have.
Excuse me, I wasn't done.
Okay.
Again, we have a process in place to do that.
No, we have two processes in place.
Excuse me, I have the floor. We have a process in place for doing that, and again, I'm reminded that recently, we had a process in place where we bypassed an ordinance recently that clearly called out that we needed to go to the Property Management Review Board before some changes were made to an ordinance. That wasn't followed, and so I think going forward, it's important that we identify the process, especially when we're changing policy, when we're changing an ordinance, that's something different than, say, setting aside a liquor license for a wedding reception at the Davis Lodge. It ought to be good practice to discuss policy and ordinance changes ahead of time before they show up on the agenda.
Okay, some of that is often done informally, and then there can be other ways to do that. I think this is another thing why it's very important for us to, maybe even in our retreat, talk about the ways where other communities do interact with each other in two-on-one meetings, perhaps beforehand. But certainly, there, the process that we've had recently in place is the one that you've mentioned, that is, council members can stipulate a petition and get five people to sign it on. Before that, the way to put something on the agenda was, is the mayor and city manager. And so, and again, some of this may just be disagreement. I do remember the property maintenance review thing. If the property maintenance review board hasn't met in years, I don't feel that that's necessary to check that box. Policymaking is made in many different ways. We don't always check, you know, boxes or dot Is and cross Ts, and that's just, that's the way it does work.
Then, then, then we change the ordinance. We don't simply, we don't arbitrarily say, we're not going to follow the ordinance as it's written.
I think we are following the ordinance as it's written.
Excuse me? The property management review board is not meeting or is not active, then we adjust, we adjust the ordinance to handle that situation.
But is there any mandate that they speak to something?
And it wasn't followed. So my point is, is that going forward, when we're looking at something as significant as an ordinance change or a policy change, but let's have some process that includes some advanced council conversation before something lands on the agenda, so we have initially some level of support across the council beyond perhaps, you know, a single or one or two elected officials.
Okay. Again, I think we just have to agree to disagree. Alderman Burgess.
Thank you. Since the question was raised about how this got onto the agenda, I'm happy to share the background. I believe this actually was the very first phone call I got after I was elected, and it was, Mr. Salisbury is now in charge of the David Davis Mansion, but it was his predecessor calling and expressing some concerns and asking questions about how perhaps they could get some help from the city or get city services with regard to brush and bulk. And of course, I said, "Thank you for your call." I immediately hung up and called the mayor and said, "Oh, my goodness, people expect me to do things. What do I do?" And so he, we and I talked it through, and he, the mayor, said, "This is, this is great. We should find a way to work with David Davis Mansion, because they're such a great institution within our community." And at that point, I took it to Mr. Karch, who's Director of Public Works, and the thing that we're being asked to vote on tonight was actually not the first proposal that came from David Davis Mansion. They'd made a slightly different suggestion. I won't go into those details, because there were several iterations where Mr. Karch and eventually Mr. Rasmussen worked with David Davis Mansion to come to the present suggestion. I was only minimally involved in any of those conversations. It was staff that came to a recommendation and made the evaluation on how they can best provide services without, I believe, causing too much imposition on city staff or the city budget. So this is kind of one of those situations where, while I was involved, I am not the one putting forward this particular ordinance. I do support it. I think we should move forward on this, but it's not the same as me saying, having actually put together an ordinance and asking council to consider. It was actually staff-driven, and staff went through the city manager, as well as the mayor, form of getting on the agenda, is my understanding. Now, it's fair enough, if you believe a different process should have been used, that's perfectly acceptable, but the fact that there are multiple processes available and one was chosen over another does not in any way infer that someone used the wrong process. It's just a different process than perhaps others would use. So if you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer those, but that's, to the best of my recollection, how this got up to where it is. I would like to point out that this is not the first time the city has entered into some sort of agreement with an outside entity. Prior to my being on council, they signed an intergovernmental agreement with the Evergreen Memorial Cemetery in order to provide similar services, and my recollection is that also went on to the consent agenda, although others may have a better memory. But, so this is consistent with past city policy. Thank you.
Alderman Lauer?
Well, Mayor, I understand and I agree that, yes, there are two legal differentials in terms of how to get things on the agenda. However, I do support Alderman Sage's proposal. In many of these instances, we could be avoiding the numerous violations of Open Meetings Act that we have recently acquired. And so, I don't mean to criticize, but I do mean to point it out. I think it's better for democracy, I think it's better for open and very thorough discussion amongst representatives and amongst the citizens. Thank you.
Alderman Fruen?
I don't know if I could have placed this a few minutes ago, because I think I'm going to be repeating some of the comments, but I just want to go on record that I share some of the concerns. This is really, I hope, I hope this isn't, I don't mean this in a condescending way. This is a, you know, be careful of the media, don't you, to pick up every word you get. It's kind of a feel-good thing for the David Davis Mansion, and we like to support our council members whenever we can. And so, in that respect, I think I'm inclined to support this, but what caught my eye, too, was the process, the procedure. And I read here that this is the only national historic landmark that has a designation that we would apply this to. And I got thinking to myself, you know, we have some other great landmarks, whether it's the History Museum, Museum of History, on, and on, and on. I'm just wondering, when's the next organization coming through that's going to ask for some help? I read here, there's no estimate as to how much landscape or bulk waste is generated by the mansion, but it's not anticipated to be a significant impact. There's probably quite a bit of landscape there, materials, but I'm not sure there's much bulk waste. Somebody else would have to tell me that, but I guess more than the actual vote here is, is where does this go from here? Aren't other organizations going to be asking for, can you include me? And I find it interesting that we can find agreement on something like this, where we spent hours and hours and hours and couldn't get to the core issue of a bulk waste decision for the community. So I'm supportive of David Davis Mansion. I'll vote support of this.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm by motion.
All right. Oh, we don't have a motion. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass this as presented.
Is there a second? Second by Alderman Burgess. Okay, obviously, I vote in favor, no votes in opposition. Okay, the motion passes eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and I wonder if we can bring Alderman Painter back in. And now, as I understand it, I'm taking these not in alphabetical order, but the order in which they were brought forth. Alderman Burgess, I understand you have item seven H you would like to recuse yourself from. Okay. Item seven H. Is there a motion to approve that, to begin discussion?
Actually, I pulled it because I wanted to avoid in the negative.
Oh, okay. Is there, well, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Is there a second? Second by Alderman, excuse me, moved by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Hellman, but you pulled it to speak again.
Right, right. So I, you know, I'm not trying to revisit an issue that gave everybody a lot of heartburn, but I feel it is important for me to, to be consistent with my previous vote on the special permit. And concerns that were raised from the residents was the amount of traffic that this would generate, but also the timing of the traffic study, which was done at a time where there weren't a whole lot of people driving through in the area. And in addition, we also have a lack of an appropriate outlet for people out of the neighborhood, so there was only one street that allows people to get in and out of the neighborhood. Cornelius, which is the next best option, has been on the books to be developed completely for, what, for the past almost twenty years. for, what, for the past almost 20 years, actually? And still has not been completed. And I think people would have been more open to the, to this particular development if Cornelius had been completed. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman.
And just to plug, I don't have any disagreement with Mboka.
I hope not.
Served that area for many years. And I think we are making progress with the opening of the Advocate Plus facility, a $35 million medical facility. And I think with the infill that's taking place, whether it's Gold's Gym, the bank, McDonald's, Advocate, that's filling in. And I hope that with a little more development, that we can extend Cornelius through. I think that's going to be a big relief to those that live on the east side of that. So that's been our hang-up up until now, is we need more infill there. And I think that'd be, can be a great relief for that neighborhood that you're so concerned with.
Okay. Oh, Alderman.
Just wanted to shortly mention, we're going to be talking about a TIF downtown again tonight, and this would be an excellent area for a very mini TIF district or some other financial mean to attract business and finish that street. And so it doesn't happen to be downtown, but we really need to feel, finish Cornelius so that we don't have this bottleneck in that area. And so I agree with, I agree with Mboka, but we really, you know, in the long run, we need to develop the area. We need to complete the street. And so we need to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this point, then, an "I" vote is in favor of the motion as presented, and an "A" is in opposition. The motion, let's see, not everybody participated. Oh. Okay, the, oh, I'm sorry, we're not done yet. It's a tie vote. I'm sorry. Okay. So there are four nays, and there are four ayes, and I will vote "aye." Okay. So the motion carries five to four. There are four nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lauer, Alderman Sage, Alderman Malamway, and Alderman Painter.
Okay. Oops, excuse me. Go away. There we go. Okay. All right. Next is item 7D, and that was, let's see, Alderman Fruehn. And you weren't recusing yourself, you just wanted to pull it. Is that correct? Okay.
I just want to make some comments.
Yeah, if you can turn that on, please. Thanks, Jim.
Mayor, I think I just want to make some comments, and I'm probably an outlier or in the minority on this one. So I guess I defer to somebody else in the council that wants to provide a supporting motion. I don't know that I can be a supportive vote on this one.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion either to approve or disapprove? Is there a motion to approve? Let me see, if it dies of its first or second. Moved by Alderman Hellman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim, is there some, I mean, kind of a high-level summary of why?
No. No. So I'd like to do that now. I want to get the motion out on the table first.
Well, he was just about ready to call for a vote.
Yeah, I didn't, I thought you were done. Sorry. Go ahead.
Clock on me?
No, we don't have the clock on you, Jim. No.
Okay. So I've talked about health care before, and that's this about health care is what I want to make my comments with regard to. I'll start out, first and foremost, is that I truly value our City of Bloomington employees. I want to make sure that's very clear. I hope that my comments that come the next couple of minutes are consistent with the comments that I've made over the last few years to this body. We talked earlier about how do we do, why do we do, what we do, because we've done it in the past. And we think about this, we have our own staff that has always and continues to recommend benefit levels for themselves and the employees of the city. I don't know what the solution is to that, but we think about that scenario that we have in place, staff recommending benefit levels for their own enjoyment. I'm real open to anybody who wants to correct me on any of these statements. They may be, have another perspective. But it's my belief that as a city, we have one of the richest, if not the richest, benefit package of any employer in McLean County. I believe that this council has enough diversity in itself, whether it's through employers or knowledge of employers in the community, that we have knowledge of comparable benefits that are received by other employers in the community. Many of us have talked about the richness of benefits, health care and beyond, for many years, but it's never received any consensus concern or traction from the city council. And without that, staff has not been able to change their course of what they've done in the past. For example, things that I've talked about are deductible levels, spousal coverage, reimbursement levels, out-of-pocket exposure. And if I could sum all that up in one comment, it would be the fact that, however you want to describe it, our taxpayers, our residents, our business owners, anybody that's paying taxes to the City of Bloomington are paying taxes to support benefit levels, health care included, that have a richness to them that's far greater, far greater than what they enjoy themselves. So if we went around this dais and asked people, "What's your benefit, your deductible? What's your co-pay? What's your out-of-pocket exposure?" I think that would tell the story. So I think I'm an outlier on this one, but bottom line, I think we have to correct and adjust our benefit programs to be more consistent with other employers in the community and what residents, taxpayers, business owners have for themselves. So I've been singing the song, and I don't think I'm getting much support, much traction. We talk about kicking the can down the road, and I think that's what we're doing in this case. We're not making adjustments to the private sector, and I'll leave it at that. My vote's probably going to be a token, probably an eight-one or seven-two, I don't know, but it's going to be a token though. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hellman, and, excuse me, I'm black.
I had a question for David first, and that is where we are on the benefit study?
Yeah, we're, next month, we're going to be having on the agenda kind of some more discussion on the topic of the employee compensation philosophy and policy going forward. Nicole Albertson, the HR Director, together with some other individuals will be here. And of course, this whole discussion is for the council to kind of weigh in and help establish at a high level, you know, what is the direction you want to go long-term with employee compensation? How would it carry over and affect, you know, the bulk of our manpower, which is incorporated in 11 collective bargaining units, two of which that are subject to interest arbitration? And certainly with all those unions, we have to kind of follow state law as it has to do with collective bargaining. Now, that doesn't mean you can't look to reduce pay, benefits, or accommodation, but that'll be, I think, a very important conversation for the council going forward, so that you can begin to put in place the specific policies or philosophies you want us to carry forward in any collective bargaining.
No, I was just trying to, no, I was just trying to get a date, kind of a timeframe when we could expect to get that, because I don't know that we can hold up this particular contract to wait for that, since it was already, we're already a couple of months past due on that, so.
Could I also just add, too? The agreement you have here is kind of based on the very early city council closed-session direction you gave our collective bargaining team to follow through with. So I think in this case, what we're trying to do is, this agreement was within the parameters of what direction you, the council, gave us. I don't know if it was unanimous at that time, but again, that's what we're bringing back to you. If it changes in the future, again, you will be in the driver's seat to provide that policy direction as to what you want us to proceed to negotiate.
So the report that we're getting will be not just salaries, but benefits as well?
Again, it's not a report.
Or not?
It's not the guts. We're having difficulty, because again, sometimes even some of the private sector data isn't available. They won't provide it specifically for the Bloomington area. A lot of our data is kind of the incorporating the Chicago area. There is some of these firms, too, that won't get down into nitty-gritty comparables. But as you hear it here tonight, you know, so much of the workforce, even in the Bloomington normal area, is from public institutions, city, county, school districts. You know, and then when you look into the private, you know, the insurance area, those are some of the most difficult to get very specific benefit and salary data to try and make comparisons of our workforce, but the others, so. But Nicole will be bringing that forward.
So it will include more than just salaries information?
We're.
Where possible.
We don't have a report to bring to you next month, no. But what we'll be talking about is the difficulties in getting the report, getting that data, especially from the private sector, to help us and to help you in going forward.
But we can, we could certainly get information about unions, because the contracts are public.
Yeah, getting public sector compensation information is not the problem. It's the private sector.
Oh, Alderman Black.
Thank you. And I don't know if this question is for Jeff or for David, but suppose this motion does not pass this evening, what is the outcome?
Jeff or, maybe Nicole just come down here in case we need to for some help.
We've got Nicole and Angie here tonight as well. So if the, these negotiations, this is subject to ratification, that's the stage we're obviously at tonight. So if this was not ratified, then we would need to go back to the bargaining table. But I will let the experts.
That's actually the answer. It doesn't need a whole, you know, presentation.
You may as well stay up there just in case.
Just in case. And the reason I'm asking is because I agree with what Jim is saying in relation to the perception and the reality, in many cases, that the benefits that our employees have are out of whack with the private sector. And I know that one of the budget task force recommendations was to take a deep dive into some of this information and take a close look and make some decisions from that. And, you know, I hear that we're moving along with this study, but I would note that is, I don't know if I need to see that, you know, what other Chicago collar counters are doing, what the private sector is doing. I think we just need to make some choices, because I think the sense I'm getting from other council members is that it's out of alignment, and that's something that we want to take a look at and either ratchet it down at a high level or make some decisions at that point in time. But to vote "no" on this would probably end up in arbitration, I imagine, or just continue to spend more time. So, well, I don't disagree with what Jim is saying. I disagree with him in the fact that this is not a, something I'd be pulling, this is the direction that we had given staff in the past, and I'm always about giving clear direction and being consistent with that. So I just wanted to publicly say, though, that I, while I appreciate what he's saying, I think when we get to whatever this study looks like, we as a group have to make some determinations. And I'm sure that we're going to hear some feedback from the employees about what that's going to look like, and we have to be able to take what that feedback is and move forward. So I appreciate that information. Sorry to call everybody up here, so.
Alderman Painter, Burgess Lauer.
Thank you. And well, I agree that things are out of line, Jim. I've only been on council for a little over two years, but I have sat in meeting after meeting with our arbitration attorney, and things aren't as easy as just snapping your fingers and saying, "Oh, you're not going to get the benefits that you had before." It takes a lot of negotiation. And to say that we're kicking the can down the road or that we don't care, I have to respectfully disagree with that. Thank you.
Alderman Burgess and Lauer.
Yeah, I think Alderman Painter said that very well, that I'm a little afraid, because I understand where Jim is coming from, we've had a lot of conversations about this, but I'm a little afraid that because the audience and the public may only be hearing portions of this conversation, that it gives the wrong impression that the rest of council isn't just as concerned. But we have limitations, and we're dealing with bargaining units. We have limitations on how much change we typically can make over time. So this will be, from my perspective, this will be a process. And if you go through the packet, these are, this contract reflects reductions in both our typical wage increases, as well as in our typical benefits. Is it as far as perhaps we need to go to come in line with the private sector? Maybe not, probably not. But it is an improvement. We just need to keep in mind, we got here over a long period of time to where we are with our benefits. And unlike the private sector, who are free of bargaining units, we can't just make, impose those changes based on what we would like to see necessarily. It's a negotiation. It's a back and forth. And this does reflect a movement towards reining in costs.
Alderman Lauer, Fruehn, and Malamway.
Well, I think it is important. We've done a lot of hard work here, Jim. And unfortunately, you've made a very poignant point, but I think we do have to pass this tonight. There have been a number of concessions made on both sides on this particular contract. I think what you're hitting on here is that we're kind of imposing a little self-criticism, a lack of leadership, and I think it has to start at the top. And so we've got to feel the pain, too. And that starts with our management and filters down from there, I think. We have to set the example. That's the way the private sector does it. Nobody's ever happy when benefits are lost. I've certainly been in a situation where all the benefits that everybody that had been with the company for many years had accrued, lost. But we kept our jobs, and that was important. And we're going to keep our city. We're going to keep turning. We're going to keep improving. We've got a lot of good things to do. And my hope is that we can spool up our economy and we can afford better benefits for everyone, including the private sector. Thank you.
Alderman Malamway, and then Fruehn, and then we're going to move on.
Okay. Good. That way we let Jim have the last word. Well, all I wanted to say was that I know I've heard this conversation about the private sector, benefits being less than public sector. But I think as we do these studies, David, I think we also need to take a look at, you know, making an apple-to-apple comparison, because in my observation of working with the staff, I mean, the staff also spend, spends an inordinate amount of hours, you know, beyond five o'clock. I mean, I've seen many of them come to meetings late at night, seven, eight, nine o'clock, meeting with residents as well. So I want to be sure, you know, I want to be careful, you know, with the dollars that we, you know, we have to be stewards of, but at the same time, we have to be able to make fair, equitable comparisons, and then eventually, we can make the best decision possible, because it's very easy to look at, you know, the private sector and say, you know, "Why don't we do the same thing that they do?" But I, I know, for example, in the private sector, people get bonuses, you know, at the end of the year. In the public sector, people do not get bonuses. So you often trade lower salaries for benefits, you know? So I just want to be able to take a look at it in a way that is, you know, fair and analytical, not to say that Jim is being unfair. I think it's, he raises some valid points, but we have to be careful how we're comparing things.
Okay. Jim, last word, and then we're going to vote.
And Mayor, I think I've accomplished probably what I wanted to. It's good discussion that we need to have something more in-depth, and we can do it in a work session, we can do it in a city council setting. We need more depth to our discussion. I'm glad Scott asked the question he did about what happens if. And anybody that knows me up here knows that I have approved and never voted against any collective bargaining agreement that came to this council. That's probably hundreds, hundreds. The very first comment I made is that I valued the City of Bloomington employees. I think, I hope everybody heard that. And to have someone tell me that I don't care, I think that's a mischaracterization.
I didn't say that. No, you said, "We didn't care."
Okay. Yeah, I think it was just a misunderstanding.
And I would also take exception to the comment about kicking the can down the road. So we've talked about health care and benefits long before the last.
So we've talked about healthcare and benefits long before the last couple of years. So regardless of your time in the council, and that's not directed to Johnny or anybody else, benefits have been talked about for a long time. I hear a lot of conversation about studies and pulling this together. We know what employers are providing in town. We don't need a consultant to come in and tell us. Look at who's represented up here on the dais and look at the prior employers we have. Anyway, I think we've accomplished it. I hope we can generate the discussion further. I think David made a good comment that this is kind of a follow-up to the direction we think we got from the council, even though it might not have been a majority or consensus. You know, if we would ask ourselves, we'd go around the council tonight and say, did we specifically concur that we were doubling the life insurance benefit? How many people would raise their hand to say they agreed with that? I don't have any problem with it, but we didn't drill down to those specifics. And that's why we have Nicole and her team to kind of sort that out. You have a very difficult job. And finally, I'd just say, I've been on the council for a few years. I realize you don't turn the ship overnight. It takes time. And I just hope that we can generate some follow-up to this. And it'll be interesting to see what happens in a month when we have a little more information from staff about 2017 healthcare. So thanks for letting me talk about this a little bit. I hope we can talk about it some more.
Okay. At this point, we're going to vote. And an "I" vote, of course, is in favor of the motion as presented. Uh, the motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce, Madam Clerk. We move along now to our regular agenda. A little late at eight fifteen to start our regular agenda, but we will. And we're going to start with Tom DeBryiner. This is item eight A, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a professional services agreement with House Levine and Associates. Hit it, Tom.
Good evening again. You know, if you're a community development director or somebody with a planning background like I have, this is actually a pretty exciting presentation, so. You'll recall a few months ago, I showed you the triangle with the base being public input, in the middle being the comprehensive plan, and the top being a zoning ordinance, and how they're dependent on one another all the way up and all the way down. I'm sorry?
Where's your flip chart?
I don't, I don't have it. I'm sorry. I hope that doesn't result in a no vote. Well, that's what we're talking about tonight is the top of that triangle. And I'm really pleased to recommend a solid firm to help us with that work. Several points that I need to make though. The City of Bloomington adopted its comprehensive plan, award-winning comprehensive plan, a year ago this month. So the timing is coincidental. But the existing zoning ordinance has a number of different problems. It does need to be updated to reflect the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan that was adopted. It needs to correct some out-of-date land uses. Needs to consider current development trends, best practices. There are some legal decisions that have occurred, and we need to make sure that our ordinance reflects those decisions. And it also contains a number of conflicting provisions that we need to straighten out, so this is a great opportunity to do that. A while ago, we sent out a request for proposal. We received three responses. A team that was made up of Katie Simpson, our city planner, George Boyle as the city attorney, and myself, sat down and interviewed two of the firms, both of whom were within the budget for this item. The third was not and also had, was lacking legal representation, which being a zoning ordinance, it's pretty important to have that. City staff interviewed these two firms and recommends House Seale Levine with, who teamed with Holland and Knight as their attorney, land use attorney for this. They presented a number of advantages in our minds. They did actually bring the project manager rather than simply trying to sell us with upper-level principles of the firm. They do believe that they can meet with what is admittedly an aggressive timeframe for doing this, but, you know, my goal is to not have to wait too much longer. There's been a lot of public input that we can base this on. Excited about that, and they were excited about that as well. And then I do want to point out that I've worked with House Seale Levine on a number of other projects, including a couple of award-winning projects elsewhere as a client. I should point that out when I say I work with them. I wanted to be clear about that. And I do think that they would be a great match for this community. They're very much oriented towards visuals, and I think that would go a long way in our ordinance. So we're recommending House Seale Levine for $125,000 and be happy to try to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. DeBryiner. See, Alderman Hellman and Lauer.
Do you want to motion first?
Oh, sure. If you're going to make a motion, we can do that.
Well, I want to do both. I mean, I want to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move that we consider approving professional services agreement with House Levine and Associates.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Burgess. Now we'll start with Alderman Lauer.
I hate to be critical, but from, from a private sector standpoint, when we look at a market and we start to change some of the zoning rules, it gives, it gives the investor, gives the companies involved a pause. And it creates instability in the market. And I don't know that this is the time that we should be impeding the market and creating that instability. I want to do everything I can to encourage those folks to invest in our community. And I want to try to give them every, every opportunity to make those investments without a lot of hiccups. We talk about the one-stop shop. This appears to me, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe these are just very, very minor changes. I don't think they are though. It appears to me that this is going to, is going to discourage rather than encourage that investment. And depends on who's investing. I understand that. Depends on the project. But from an overall perspective, I don't know enough about what these folks are going to be doing to really say yes.
Want to respond to that, Tom?
Well, the adoption of the comprehensive plan actually really requires another look at the zoning ordinance, first of all. Second of all, we do have a lot of conflicts within the zoning ordinance as it exists, which need to be resolved. That will help, I think, address some of the concerns that you have. And I do think that we need to move forward with an ordinance that today would allow blacksmith downtown as opposed to some high-tech kind of business. And those are some of the changes that we really need to, need to address. The other thing is it gives us an opportunity to look and see whether some of the regulations that we have, and I do believe that there's some real potential in this, whether some of those can be rolled back. Now's the time to do that, when we have this kind of opportunity.
Good. Alderman Hellman and then Black.
Thanks, Tom. I appreciate the fact that you provided background on why this company was selected. I like the fact that they meant, referenced the alignment with Bring It On Bloomington and historic preservation areas in transition. And I especially like the fact that it's eight months versus 15 to 16 months so that we can get moving. This may impact how we see down, some of the things that we want to do downtown when we get, when we continue that discussion. So thanks.
Okay. Alderman Black.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. I just want to take a moment and give you a public shout-out because I think that your department has been doing a fantastic job. You know, I work a lot with your office, you know, for various code enforcement things, and it's like night and day. And the many things that you are implementing and making things happen is really impacting the residents' lives in a very positive way. And I just wanted to make sure that that was said publicly because a lot of these things people don't think about and until it becomes a major issue. And, you know, we joke about your flip chart from before, but that really is a way of how we've engaged the public throughout this process. And I can say that a lot of feedback that I get is people who are either looking to invest, whether that be residential or commercial, they're looking for consistency and clarity and ease. And if we can really streamline and make our codes way more accessible, way less confusing, and kind of purchase stuff that is no longer applicable, we're doing that. And that makes a positive business climate. So I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to voting for this motion.
Okay. Alderman Burgess, last one.
Could you just give us a brief overview of what this process will look like? So it's going to take about eight months, but what will be the opportunities for public input and for people to give feedback?
Sure. A lot of opportunity for public feedback. First of all, all changes have to go through the Planning Commission. And we intend on taking this discussion to the Planning Commission at least once, at least once a month. A lot of material to cover, so it might sneak into two meetings a month. Also, there are specific portions of the zoning ordinance that would require, I think would benefit from some input and clarification from some of the interest groups out there. When we're talking about downtown, it does blend very well, Alderman, with what you just suggested. Great potential there for some synergy and clarification, for one. And I do think as we go through the process and take a look at things that we might, or regulations that we might want to relax, it's important to get the input of people who are affected on both sides of that as well. So we would, we would do that additional reach out.
Okay. All right. At this point, thank you, Tom, and we'll go ahead and vote. The motion carries eight to one. There's one name to announce. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Lauer.
Okay. All right. Move on to our next item on our regular agenda, eight B, presentation of downtown Southwest redevelopment project, the TIF redevelopment plan. And we're going to, the, starting out here with a presentation by David Hales and Austin Griner.
And Mayor, in the interest of time, I'll just go to Austin, just give some high overview comments on what we are bringing to you tonight for your consideration and approval. Austin.
Thank you, City Manager Hales. Council Mayor, I'm pleased to present to you the redevelopment plan for the downtown Southwest TIF area. You should have all received a copy of this plan. Just like to step back for just a second and see where we have come in this process. March 14th, the council approved the inducent resolution, which will also be a topic of discussion for tonight with the Bloomington Downtown Redevelopment Partners. Then on May 9th, the council approved an ordinance hiring PGAV, our Economic Development Consulting Firm, to draft this feasibility study and redevelopment plan. Also, July 21st, a notice of the interested parties registry was published in the Panograph. August 10th, this plan was placed on file at the Clerk's office. And then tonight, you are being presented with an ordinance to set a time and place for the required public hearing for this proposed TIF district, and also establish a date for the Joint Review Board. So really, the ordinance before you tonight gets this process to create this proposed TIF really rolling and kicked off. The next future milestones would be September 8th, which would be a meeting of the Joint Review Board. And then as outlined in the ordinance that's before you right now, October 10th would be the public hearing at City Hall. Due to certain statutory delays in the TIF Act, we have to wait to actually adopt the three ordinances that would create the TIF. And so that could be as soon as the last council meeting in October or potentially early November. Just kind of looks at what's on the agenda and what the schedule looks like for those nights. This redevelopment plan is strongly rooted in our comprehensive plan, as is required by the TIF Act. Any redevelopment plan must call out and be in synchrony with the city's, community's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan calls out the downtown as a mixed-use area for future growth and development. In our, or sorry, in the comprehensive plan, the downtown is seen to be the core attraction for employment, specialty retail, innovative mixed uses, potentially blacksmithing. I hear that's actually coming back. Cultural and entertainment uses should be preserved and expanded. So in the TIF redevelopment plan, we've highlighted the prioritization of mixed-use development and redevelopment projects, and also continuing to develop, promote, and provide incentives for property owners or developers to reinvest in downtown. Those are specifically called out in this TIF plan. But of course, if you look more broadly in our comp plan, you can see the desire or the direction to staff and to the council to pursue catalyst projects that can serve as additional downtown anchors. And I know that's definitely something that's been talked about for the study area. Also called out in the TIF plan is the encouraging of residential units in mixed-use development. But also you can look more broadly, improving parking, encouraging commercial and corporate uses along the corridor, and also again, coordinating parking. So you can really read a lot into the comp plan for supporting of this TIF plan. The comprehensive plan more broadly speaks about economic development, looking at metrics, wanting to try to increase the EAV throughout the city, EAV specifically in key corridors, the downtown being one of those. And also the comp plan encourages us to enhance our gateways. And of course, the study area for this TIF is a key gateway. Also, the comp plan encourages staff and the council to utilize all of the different potential incentives in our toolbox or our toolkit, tax increment financing being one of those, but also sales tax rebates or development agreements. So by moving forward with this tax increment financing redevelopment plan and establishing this TIF district, we would be doing things that would be definitely supported by our comprehensive plan. This entire redevelopment plan and information about this whole process can be found on the city's website, www.citiblm.org/tif. So if you or any of your constituents have any questions about this, please have them go to that website, or feel free to have them give me a call. I'd be happy to walk them through it. This map here shows the original study area for the TIF, the three-block area around Washington Front and Lee and Center Streets. This is what we asked a consultant to look at. After the consultant thoroughly vetted it, they determined that it would be most appropriate to not include the properties that actually front Lee Street, only to include the parking lots that are on the east half of that block. But then of course, to go ahead and include the other two full blocks in their entirety and the public rights away. So this is the specific area that's being focused on. Also, as illustrated in the plan, there's multiple maps, but you know, just looking at what are the current uses, commercial, mixed use, and a parking lot. There's a lot of parking, a lot of commercial, there's also a lot of vacancy, and that's called out in the, in the plan as well. As part of the TIF Act, the consultant is challenged to find at least five or more qualifying factors for eligibility in order to determine that the area is blighted. I've highlighted in red the certain qualifying factors that the consultant has determined are present to a meaningful extent throughout this specific TIF area. In fact, the consultant has determined that the northern half of SubArea B, the Elks Lodge and the Golden Rule Building, and then all of SubArea C qualify as a blighted area, whereas the southern half of SubArea B and all of Area A qualify as a conservation area. So this is a mixed conservation, blighted area. To be qualified as conservation area, you have to be 35 years or older, older of the buildings, and have three qualifying factors to be qualifying as blighted. There's no age requirement, but you do have to have five of the qualifying factors. And then here, we found that there are seven qualifying factors. So unfortunately, a really bad area, so therefore, TIF is appropriate. Just to call out specifically, the approximate total building square footage in this area is 160,000. Of that 85% is vacant. There's 135,000 square feet of vacant buildings. That's a very, very high amount of vacancy, significant amount of deteriorated buildings, obsolete buildings, buildings below minimum code standard. Also, the consultant determined that the public infrastructure, the utilities, definitely have some issues in the area. These are some of, of course, being our downtown, some of the oldest sewers and water lines. And so those will be needing to potentially be upgraded in concert with the redevelopment project. Also, definitely, one of the biggest qualifying factors for TIF is that the area has not grown, the EAV of the area has not kept pace with the growth in the EAV of the rest of the community or in the Consumer Price Index. And so as you can see, the majority of these properties have not kept pace with the rate of growth for five out of the last five years. of growth for five out of the last five years. So declining values. This then is the, we move on after determining that the area qualifies and is eligible for TIF. The other section of the document is the redevelopment plan. And the goals of the plan are to reduce or eliminate the blighting conditions that we see, try to prevent more blight from happening for those properties that are not currently blighted, and definitely enhance the tax base for the, for the benefit of the city and the other taxing districts. We want to leave this area better than what we saw it. And we want to encourage private investment in the area and see that that private investment is done expeditiously. We want to try to help this area in particular and, and promote development. So this budget is based upon a lot of hard work of our consultant, looking at some very realistic numbers of what potential do those blocks hold if fully developed with the mixed-use development. Could be a hotel, could be offices, could be retail, could be apartments, could be condominiums. But if you look at a potential, what could the EAV grow to if it was fully developed, what type of investment would be needed? And that's what this budget outlines here. Of course, we've had a lot of talk about, you know, maybe a $53 million hotel. So why doesn't this total to be $53 million? Well, not all of the costs of a $53 million hotel or any type of building would necessarily be TIF-eligible. Of course, in a hotel, you would have the furniture that's in all the rooms and the kitchen supplies and all those things. Those would not be TIF-eligible costs. But of course, constructing public works improvements or assembling property, those would be considered TIF-eligible. And that's where we get to this $27 million number. And again, this is an estimate. And this estimate does not necessarily imply that the city is going to be spending this money. This is more of an estimate of potential private sector investment that could be occurring. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the proposed TIF area.
Questions of Mr. Graner. Alderman Schmidt and Sage.
In the past, we have talked some about how we distribute the money that, in the increase in the EAV, and talked about different kinds of agreements, particularly with our school district. Where, where do those conversations occur?
Sure. Well, through the TIF, of course, the city council would be in control of the TIF fund that captures the increment that's created should there be development here. And so if the city council is working with a private developer to structure a redevelopment agreement, that's at that point in time, you know, do you rebate 100% of the increment to the developer? Or do you try to reserve some that could then be declared as surplus to the benefit of the city and the other taxing districts like our school district? So the other thing would be, you know, try to work with the developer to encourage as much private investment in the property and as little public investment as possible and try to write those agreements so that way they end as soon as possible. So potentially, you could close the TIF early and again, leave the area better than what it was found more quickly.
Okay. So I'm just double checking. We have that flexibility. And I, I think we have all agreed that we want a stronger, more public partnership with our other taxing bodies than maybe we've had in the past with previous TIFs, so.
Right, right.
And Alderman, if I could, yeah, I just want you to know that Austin and I meet frequently with our counterparts at District 87. We have with this project. We have, we are doing so with other TIF projects. And as you heard, you know, recently with the last TIF, there's no doubt, you know, the developers come in and usually they're asking for as much, if not all, a tax increment and other revenue that could come from the project as possible for as long as possible. But what we're hearing also from the District 87 and other tax and public institution is try to keep it as short as possible and to reduce it so that more of the project revenue goes through. So there's definitely ongoing dialogue. We have, we do feel good that, one, we're meeting some of the requests, like District 87. This is a smaller, more strategic boundary for a TIF. But until we get into specific projects, that's when we have ongoing discussion, especially with District 87, as to the negotiations going on and what would it mean to them and, and how would we do that? And then only we'll bring that back to the council to have. So, but I think that communication is flowing and we have meetings outside of the Joint Review Board to at least get their input and requests going forward as to what would be best for them. But we've also got to focus on what's going to be best for all of the taxing entities, you know, to get some, hopefully the, the highest generating investments from, you know, developers and others who would like to redevelop in this area.
Alderman, thanks. Austin, could, well, first of all, thanks again for your work here, right? City staff continues to do good work with our economic development program. Could you go back to the slide? It has the different projects and some of the cost associated. I think maybe that was the last one that you showed. So I, maybe just more of a point of clarification. So first of all, this, this is, this is not necessarily a specific punch list of projects that are going to go on inside the TIF district. This is more of a general possible scope of work that could go on inside the TIF district. Is that correct?
Right, right.
It would still be linked to specific projects and proposals and so forth, right?
Right.
What you're trying to do is to create as big an area of appropriateness and reasonability as you can.
Right.
Okay. Could, could you, I want to be sure I didn't misunderstand something that you said. Footnote number three says private development costs and investments are in addition to the above. And, and I thought maybe what I heard you say right at the end of your comments was that we would envision that these would be mostly private sector investments here or?
They could be. They could be. Some could be public, some could be private. Of course, one of the TIF-eligible redevelopment costs is the cost of property acquisition. So if you had a developer that wanted to come in and purchase a private property and use that cost as an eligible cost to be rebated, that's where the property assembly could be. That could be a private developer buying property. Or it could be the municipality taking the lead and acquiring property in order to then clear it and turn it over for, for public development.
So again, I just wanted to make sure we had alignment between what was said and what's presented here. And that is that this is not necessarily intended to be all City of Bloomington public sector investment here. Some percentage of this is envisioned as being private sector as well.
Yeah, it could be highly, the majority, private sector.
Yeah, I don't want you to, I don't want you to go that far. I just want to make sure that we've got alignment between what was said and, and what's presented here. And you've done that. So thanks. Alderman Lauer?
Well, you've talked about a lot of the positives if it's successful. And unfortunately, most of these TIF interludes are not across the country. We've even experienced one, I believe it's still within this area, in the Enzenberger Building about 20 years ago. It was not completely successful. And it cost the city. And so, fill me in, you know, if this thing doesn't go, what's it going to cost us?
Well, we have expenses of staff time setting this up, legal expense, consulting fees. So if we create this and nothing happens, we could potentially shut it down and just turn the EAV, if there has been any increase, back over to the taxing districts. And then we would just be out what the, the cost to have set it up would have been.
But there's always some strings attached. And there is some investment. Sometimes there's private investment. And then we have a negotiation typically. And then the city is on the hook financially as well. And that's what I'm worried about. We're dealing with an economy right now that is kind of fluttering if, at best. And again, I, I want to do everything I can for our current local businesses. The folks that are not inside this area are going to have to pick up the, pick up the slack. And that's what this is really all about. And so that's the downside. And I'm just not sure that this is the right time. Typically, when you do a TIF, you've got areas of town that are really doing well. And I'm not sure that that's really necessarily the case, at least historically from, from, from what Bloomington has, has done in the past. We've lost Mitsubishi. We've got some other folks that have kind of gone stymie on us and, and aren't hiring locally, et cetera. And I'm worried.
I think if you, it'll be on, on staff and the council to make sure that any redevelopment agreements that are entered into between the city and a private developer are structured to protect the city's interests, hopefully on a pay-as-you-go type of basis instead of potentially upfront bonding. That definitely reduces the risk for the city should the development not be successful. But I would say that although this is a very small targeted TIF area, I think it has great potential to benefit the entire community through definitely the investment and job creation, not only, definitely in the construction jobs, should we attract a significant mixed-use development here. As, as we can see, as a great example, the TIF that we have created on Empire Street with the redevelopment of Colonial Plaza, the hundreds of local contractors that were employed renovating that building and, and the economic impact that it had. I mean, when you employ those local workers, they're able to make their mortgage payments and go out and shop locally.
And we did that. And that's very short term, but this is a 23-year period.
Well, that's a, that's a 23-year TIF there.
I got it. I know.
And that's a 20, 20-year redevelopment agreement.
We're talking decades into the future here and the downside of that. And that's what I'm afraid of.
Alderman Schmidt, and then we're way over budget for Tom.
I wanted to make a comment and make a motion.
Oh, please.
I just wanted to remind us that the last time we had a TIF in the downtown, we started out with property EAV at below 13 million. And at the end of it, it was over $30 million. And I think it started at a time when Greg Kous is fond of saying we had more pigeons than people in the downtown. So I see this as an opportunity to build on that success. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented to us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman. Okay. At this point, let me see, I vote as for the, for this to go forward. Excuse me. Oh, there it is. Excuse me. The motion carries eight to one. There is one need to announce. Madam Clerk?
Audra M. Lauer.
Okay. All right. And we're moving right along here. We next have consideration approving a contract with KMA Design. And I'm going to turn this over to Steve Rasmussen. And as I understand, we have someone calling in to help participate here as well?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And while we're getting that up, Scott, you can go ahead and connect them. While we're connecting them up, this is with Barbara Martin from KMA. She's in Pittsburgh. I wanted to give you just a tiny little bit of background on this.
Steve, could I just interrupt for a second? Let him make the phone call first because everyone will be hearing. All right. He'll try it again in a minute, but then we'll have to just stop for a minute.
Let me know when, Scott. I did want to let you know that the, the signage committee, which you appointed, has now met for 29 times in the last year and a half. And by the way, every one of those was a public meeting and was properly posted and announced. I know that because I did it personally myself. And during these 29 meetings, first of all, they moved forward and put the international parking signs on the parking decks downtown. And then, as a result of that, you graciously put $75,000 in the budget for a wayfinding architect. And so they have now done a thorough search and have identified those people and interviewed them. And we're going to bring one up on the, on the phone now. And then I would also like to introduce the two co-chairs. I'd like to introduce the two co-chairs then, Tricia Stiller and Russell Francois. And as the, your downtown liaison, I will also follow that up with a few notes about the other things we're doing in downtown after we complete this. I think we should go ahead with this presentation. Then if you can bring them up, Scott, we will. Tricia and Francois, Russell Francois, please come forward and.
Okay. Look, will you at least stand up then, Russell, the co-chair? And maybe we could ask the other members of the committee that are here to stand.
Thank you. Give them a round of applause. Thank you. 29 meetings.
Might be Barbara. Hello?
Hello. Barbara, this is Steve Rasmussen, the Assistant City Manager. And we're here in front of the city council to present your proposal to them and authorize and hopefully get that contract approved. I'd like to ask, if I could, if you would just briefly introduce yourself then, explain your organization, and then maybe make yourself available after this presentation for any questions.
Absolutely. I'm Barbara Martin, and I'm the CEO of KMA Design. The firm is 20 years old. I started it in 1996. About 15 years ago, I took on a business partner who was David Kosick. Both of us would be involved with the project along with our staff. We have 16 full-time employees with KMA. So in addition to our long history, as well as our staff is comprised of designers and project managers, we also have site auditors or inventory specialists and construction administration specialists. So we could actually see a project from start to finish, including a graphic staff of six, which could handle branding. We also have public relations in-house, and that is not for internal PR, but that is to service clients. So that also will help us with any development of branding or taglines. So I thought I should mention that. KMA has work all over the country. We're in 29 states, plus Paris and Rome. Our work consists of city planning, signage design for universities, theme parks, casinos, healthcare. We've done over 150 hospitals nationally. So just about any project type that you could imagine that requires signage, we have done over our 20-year history.
Thank you, Barbara.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a very long evening for all of you. So I appreciate your patience and your service to this community. On behalf of the signage committee, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an update this evening. We are all very committed, and they're all right here with me hanging in, we're all very committed to enhancing the Bloomington experience through wayfinding. We all know, all of us know, that we have a wonderful city filled with unique and dynamic opportunities. And we want to make sure that everyone else knows. And we want them to know that as soon as they arrive. Whoops, trying to get, there we go. Through wayfinding, we will identify key locations and more importantly, help you find them, especially to the heart of the committee, or to heart of our city. We are very confident that we have found the perfect partners to help us reach our goals in this endeavor. And, and you've just met her, that's Barbara. I would like to add that many of our neighboring communities have already started to install a wayfinding programs, and it makes a huge difference. One that just has to look a little bit north of here and see what wayfinding signage can do to the overall psychology of a city and success of a city. To assist us with the selection process, city staff had submitted, issued an RFQ. And we were thrilled to receive nine responses to that request. And after a careful and very, very thorough review, our committee narrowed that down to our top three candidates. And we invited those three firms to come to Bloomington and meet with us. After, after three long days of interviewing, we submitted secret ballots and the outcome was unanimous. We did select KMA Design from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. So tonight, it is our recommendation that you approve the contract with KMA and allow the signage process to officially begin. We cannot emphasize enough how impressed we were with Barbara and her partner, David Kosick, when they were here in Bloomington, even though they admitted to being very sleep deprived. I think they took the red eye and were working on two hours of sleep. So they presented to us an outstanding and diverse portfolio. Sorry, I'm not flipping my slides here appropriately. A dynamic and exciting portfolio, as you can see. They were the firm that designed the entry gates to Walt Disney World, the place where dreams come true. And our committee believes that dreams can come true here in Bloomington, too. KMA has enhanced, or has enhanced conference centers, sports arenas, hospitals, higher education, travel, airports, bus stations, and not to be limited to brick and mortar. They've even designed some fancy riverboats, as you can see in that photograph just above there. They did a series of riverboats that traveled along in the East Coast, so travel opportunities. They've worked with communities of all shapes and sizes, providing each with an individualized approach that celebrates each city's uniqueness. Their approach is very collaborative and cooperative. And to quote them, this is one thing that resonated when we were meeting with them. And to quote them, this is one thing that resonated when we were meeting with them, "If we meet your expectations, well, that's just what we're supposed to do, and that's not good enough for us. We will exceed them." So again, it is our recommendation that you approve the contract with KMA Design and let this get this project started. Thank you so much.
See if we've got any questions here. Any questions of Ms. Stiller? Alderman Wambwe?
Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you. Steve. So one quick question I have is about, I read in the backup materials that it was talking about gateways. And so is this going to include recommendations to improve some of our gateways? Because I know we had a conversation about that maybe three or four years ago.
Absolutely. Yes.
Because I'd like to see that happen. I mean, I know we have some areas that need to learn.
Yeah, if you bring up that slide, what hap-- there you go. This is a great picture that KMA produced, and these are six gateways to our community in which you see no identification, other than they're just kind of intersections. And they brought these out as the gateway intersection that they would like to start out and identify for. So that's a very important part of that, and they're planning on that.
And is that even going to include recommendations for possible landscaping or things like that, or not?
Well, having seen their portfolio, and again, it was very impressive, I think there's nothing that they aren't capable of, but that all will come down to what our budget will allow us to do. I think we're going to plan this, to approach this in a phased manner, starting with signs that not only help people find our amazing attractions in the downtown, but if you're on the perimeter of downtown, how do you get there? And how do you know you're in a really special city?
The signs look nice, but if the area doesn't look that great, it's not, I mean, it's kind of a downer, I think.
I would like to point out, of course, that this $67,000 or so that's in this contract is for the studies. They will be doing the planning, and they will make the recommendations on how to do that, and estimates of the costs and where these things will go. But then we'll have to come back to you again for funding for the actual construction of those projects, and that'll be a second step in this process.
Can we get the Spider-Man Universal Studios something? Alderman Black.
Mayor, could I just interject one second? I want to go back and just clarify. The scope of this particular contractor is not necessarily to spend a lot of time on the outline corridors coming into the city, the so-called gateway corridors, or is it? Because three years ago, we did, as you might recall, go through a similar process to come up with designs for the gateways into the city, not in the downtown, but into the city. How much of this contract is focused in the downtown versus those gateways, you know, outside of the downtown coming in? So maybe if you could just clarify that.
Sure.
Can I address that?
Absolutely, you can. Thank you, Barbara.
I think that one of the things that we try to pay particular attention to is, it doesn't make much sense to only concentrate on downtown, because then you lose the opportunity to actually draw people to that area. So if they don't understand the adjacencies from one community to the other, or the boundaries or gateways in, then we feel like there's a void in that kind of traffic flow. So we like to look at the macro to the micro. So macro meaning wherever there are transitions from one community into your community, I think there is an opportunity there that we do need to evaluate and also identify as kind of an entrance or a sense of place that you've arrived. Then we would look at what are the key destinations for the community? If most of those are kind of centered in that downtown corridor area, but there are couples that are a little bit out of that realm. Those are the ones that we would prioritize and we would direct to. So then, once you have your directional signage, then you take them to that particular destination. So there's a family assigned, I mean, a signed family that would be constructed, that would kind of take you from the big picture, you've entered the city, all the way to one particular location. So I think we are going to address that in our scope of services. So if that's something you want to phase over a couple fiscal years, you can do that. If you want to do it all at once, we'll work with you on how to put that budget together and also make it work for your community, kind of from all areas geographically.
Thank you. Alderman Black.
Thank you. Thank you to the committee for all the hard work you guys have done. I just want to make a motion that we approve as presented.
Thank you. Motion, is there a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt. At this point, we'll go ahead and vote. The motion carries eight to one. There's one may to announce. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Lauer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have three more pictures I want to show you about this. This is a little unusual, because it comes after the vote, but this is a segue into the downtown. And we would like to show you the other things that we're doing downtown, because this is only a piece of it. And I'm just going to show you three pictures to show you what we're doing. This is an interesting picture here, because that's a picture of the sidewalk I took in Front Street early this week. And you can see all the blotches of gum on there, and to include the dirty sidewalk and down on the bottom, a cigarette butt. And the reason I showed you that is because one of the things that we're doing is, oh, well, thank you, is that we did a power wash of the sidewalks on Front Street and on South Main in anticipation of the music festival we had. Mr. Hale authorized this as a pilot project, and so we did just those three blocks. And you can see what the sidewalk looks like after we cleaned it there on the bottom right-hand side. We did those two blocks on Front Street and the one on South Main. It was $6,000, and it was in great shape for the downtown music festival. And we'll look again at how this may look for other parts of the downtown, and we'll see what we can do to help clean up, excuse me, help clean up the downtown. The other picture that I'm showing you, a small thing, is garbage. What we'd done before is we said that residents couldn't put their trash in the garbage cans. That was only for downtown pedestrians, but they could put their trash beside the trashcans, and our guys would pick it up. Well, it didn't make much sense to do that, because it messed up the downtown, and animals got in and it blew around. So we said, why don't we just put it in the trashcans? And so we've now changed the policy, so we're asking residents to put their trash in the trashcans. And again, Mr. Hale's authorized this for pickup on Saturday and Sunday. So now, on Monday mornings, when they come in, we hopefully will have trash picked up, and we'll have it picked up during the weekends. So these two pictures show you how we can clean up the trash and clean up the sidewalks, and that's ongoing now. They're two small things, but they'll help clean up the downtown.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Just got one comment I'd like to make. Thank you very much, Steve, and I appreciate all your hard work on this. But just to put things in perspective here a little bit, since we're talking about cleaning up the downtown, there was an article in The Panograph today that we saved $1 million on bulk waste. And South Hill and much of Ward 1 is experiencing a lot of bulk waste that sits at the curb for several, more than a week, several days at a time. So, you know, how much is this going to cost? And we're picking up the garbage downtown several times a week, yet many of our neighborhoods are experiencing a period of time which we don't get that kind of service. And so let's weigh things here, folks, a little bit.
Okay. All right. In answer to your question on the downtown pickup, it won't cost us very much more. It'll be incidental, because what happens is, if you look at those two pictures, our guys are downtown, they, and I've been down there and emptied it with them, they empty the insert and dump it in the trash container, trash truck, and then they pick up the ones that are laying on the sidewalk and put it in the truck. So they're downtown picking it up anyway. We're just saying, let's put the trash in the trashcan and pick it up. So it's going to be really a very small increase. Power washing is a bigger increase, and we'll bring that back to you as the needs present itself.
Thanks again, Steve.
Okay. I just wanted to show you the other three things that were coming. One is we're working on a parking assessment. There's an RFQ out for that. We made the development for Green Top Grocery. That's ongoing. And then you can see the demolition of the Electrolux site. Those are kind of on the periphery of downtown, but those are all three things that we're continuing to work on as we try to improve the downtown.
Great. Thanks again. We're going to move right along to our next item, under D, complete streets. And I'm going to turn that over for a brief presentation by Mr. Jim Karch. Thanks.
Mayor and city council, in the interest of time, I actually will just keep it on the nice cover slide, and so hopefully you'll enjoy that. We'll have a few different comments, and then we'll just get right to questions and discussions, so we can try to move this along. We've had a discussion about complete streets before. Let me just focus on a couple things. It is an integrated, comprehensive transportation network. What we're talking about is inclusive. We use words like multimodal, but we mean things like pedestrians. We talk about bicyclists. We talk about cars. We talk about buses, all of the like. I want to make sure we acknowledge the work that you, as a council, have already done in recent years. One, you've already passed a bike master plan. You've passed an award-winning sidewalk master plan. You've increased the funding toward infrastructure from what it had been in the past, and we're on the cusp of additional discussions on increasing it even further. All of those things play into a good network. Tonight, before you, the one thing I'd like to talk about, the two things, I guess, is this is different than what was brought to you on June 20th. On June 20th, we did talk about it. It was brought up in even the resident, the citizen comments in the beginning. Just like to address that with you briefly. The reason it is different is originally, we took it to you and said, no additional cost beyond what you'd already approved. After we have considered and talked to additional council members, talked to members of the community, looked at what the town of Normal passed, we are taking a different approach to this tonight. I want to make sure I highlight that, because I told you one thing June 20th, I'm telling you something different of what I'm recommending tonight. Before, we were saying we are filtering it through the master plans and that what you've already approved. Tonight, what we're saying is that every new street, street that's being resurfaced and private development will be filtered through the complete streets philosophy. And so again, that has a different impact, and we want to make sure we highlight that. But it does push us forward faster. It does allow, as a council, that ability. It does, it may be additional resources, but it does move the city in a good, you know, in a more, it moves us forward faster to be a better multimodal community. So it's important to highlight those things, and at this point, I guess I'd like to answer any questions you have and begin discussion.
Jim, before doing so, would you just comment on, because I think it was brought up, with the extra time and effort, what have you learned from other cities that have gone to this approach of evaluating each street and the impact it has had on staff requirements?
Sure. I actually was just having lunch with a person I consider to be a mentor. I really like him a lot. He is the Director of Public Works for Urbana, Bill Gray. And he's, Urbana, as many of you know, Champaign-Urbana, is an excellent community that has been moving forward in really not just multimodal period. They've been increasing their ability for bicyclists, every other facet, and so it is not just about one component. Bill did make the comment to me, we were talking about it. He said, well, just acknowledge that it's going to be extra resources. I said, well, what are you talking about? What would you say? He said, well, you know, it's going to be a person and a half to two people to be able to keep up with the type of improvements, and that's just from a staff perspective of some of those things. Those are just comments that he had made. It is important to acknowledge. I don't want to ignore, that can be outsourced work, it can be additional staff, but it does take additional resources. But again, to be the kind of community that Bloomington is looking to be, that is the kind of, that vision of where the council's casting us as a community. But it's important for you to know the resources that get tied to that. Thank you, David.
Oh, okay. Alderman, Alderman, Alderman Black and then Lauer.
I guess, I realize I left this on. So thanks, Jim, for this, and also the clarification as to why we have the difference here. I know you've been working on this for a long time, and I've gotten a lot of feedback about this conversation. And the point I wanted to highlight this evening is that in the very beginning of this meeting, which seems like a long time ago, I think it was, there was, one of the three points that were addressed in the public health issue was obesity. And one thing that we do here in Complete Streets may be helping to address some of those issues. And I wanted to highlight on the report here, you know, in my packet, it is page number 513, but it's zoning practice 2.13, if you're looking in there, if you want to follow along. In the most basic sense, complete streets are for everyone. They are streets that are designed for people first and foremost. I mean, who can disagree with that? And to me, this is a core function of the city. We're trying to engage as many people with as many multimodal ways as possible. And to me, cities are the ones that are successful down the road, pun intended, are the ones who are visionary and willing to take, consider all the different alternatives. So I'm not saying we should put light rail in here, but at one point in time, light rail was in Bloomington, got taken away, and then you had a street. That was kind of the direction the economy was moving at that time. They made a decision and went with it. My perspective, I think we're in a position where we can see multimodal approaches to communities, and those are the ones that are going to be successful down the road. We can make a determination date to allocate resources towards it, and I think that's a wise investment for our future. So I hope that, looking forward to the conversation from some of my colleagues up here. But I'm fully supportive. I think this is a good use of resource. I think this is a good investment for our community, and it's going to definitely make an impact for our future.
Alderman Lauer, Burgess, Fruen, and Sage.
I have to counter that with a lot of negativity. I'm sorry to have to do that, but I have actually visited a number of these communities that have implemented this, including Rolla, Missouri, St. Joe, Michigan, Chuburg, Wisconsin, Madison, Wisconsin, Charlotte, North Carolina, among many, many others. And quite frankly, I don't see that many folks taking advantage of all this. Now, Philadelphia is another story. They do have light rail, and they have a lot of folks that ride it. And I've ridden their rail. I've used the multimodal things in Boston, New York City, you name it, mainly in California, as a matter of fact. When we have high-density folks living in high-density areas, it works. I don't think that's really where Bloomington is and where they really want to go. I don't disagree with having a few bike lanes in very, very strategic locations to try to make it more viable, but we've been riding bikes through this community for many, many years. To go to this expense, and we can't even afford to repair the streets that we've got, just seems to be way out there to me. I think we need to take one step at a time. If our economy was burgeoning, and we were really doing great things, we were creating a lot of jobs, we were moving people in here, and we're having to figure out where we're going to put them and how we're going to build all the homes, I might go along with this. But I don't see that happening in the next 10 years, to be quite frank, if we don't turn things around with our budget here. Yeah, I know we've got a little bit of a surplus right now, but that's because we implemented a lot of taxes here in the last three years. If our businesses were really cracking along here and hiring people and having difficulties finding those folks, you know, I might go along with some of this, but I just don't see it. This is a requirement. It's actually creating an environment that gets the citizens to act in a way in which the government wants them to act. I don't think that's what folks want. I think it needs to go the other way around. If we've got people knocking down the doors to get this to happen, I'd go along with it. But I don't see that. I'm not hearing that. I'm not hearing a lot of folks that are having difficulties riding their bicycles in this community. I don't see it. I do hear a lot of folks complaining about the streets. I hear a lot more folks complaining about our sewers. We've got some major investments to make in those two items in the decades to come. I think we need to be concentrating on the basics here and quit paying attention to all these fads with street furniture, for crying out loud. Let's look at what we really need. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman, Burgess, Fruen, and Sage.
Couple of questions. Number one, you said you had a conversation with the Urbana, or was it Urbana or she?
Urbana, yeah.
Okay. I get the two confused. They're kind of close together. You said that they felt that it added one and a half to two people. For what purpose?
I didn't actually drill down in that manner. It was actually him that offered that up, you know, talking about just to be aware of the extra, the resources that it takes. So I don't want to put words in his mouth, so that's not his statement. If I were to, you know, try to address that question, what could it possibly take? Few things, I guess, if I think about it, you know, whenever you have a different standards and such to apply, instead of going through some of the master plans, you're actually having a lot more engagement, a lot more outreach, a lot more different types of infrastructure that can be utilized, trying to make sure that, a lot of the standards, actually, in this are evolving and changing. We had talked about that last time on June 20th. And so what's acceptable? We've had this conversation before, as far as, you know, are we, as a community, more conservative with liability, exposure, things like that? Are we trying to be more, you know, just progressive in what we allow and trying to make it that type of environment? That's really a council-level decision, but I would assume those type of things take additional staff time. And I think that might be what he's speaking to, but I could always follow up with him.
Okay. I think it's very difficult, especially based on a single person, to really be able to make any conclusions based on our community. I mean, Normal just passed theirs, saying that they didn't anticipate any particular change to the cost of implementing a complete streets policy. There may be individual impacts on each particular project, and that could either be a higher cost or a lower cost, because one of the things Complete Streets does is it says we should stop overbuilding our infrastructure. So, I, I do wonder with, with Urbana, because I can see that there might be an initial upfront cost as we change our policies. But once we have done that, and we have policies and manuals that we follow, it's harder for me to understand how there would be any built-in costs. There may be cost-benefit ratio choices we make over time, like we would with any project, because we can have the Cadillac, or we can have the, whatever a lower-cost car is. I don't want to malign anyone's brand, but, you know, we have the, you know, the higher cost, the really expensive product, and we have, you know, the reality that we can't always afford that. So, I'm hesitant to say that this will cost, will require us to include any additional staff members. Do you agree with that? Do you think that's a fair?
And the only reason I would not necessarily agree with that is because I know Bill Gray is actually extremely supportive as far as infrastructure, biking infrastructure. He's extremely supportive of that. I mean, he's been that way for decades, and so, for him to make that statement, I guess I would just like to follow up and get some more clarification on, on that from him, but...
Okay. And I think we could probably get some more numbers. I mean, more than 100 communities in the state of Illinois have passed complete streets ordinances. Certainly, they may have different or similar experiences. We could find out more about what to expect. Number two, oh, with regard to community support, I always like to bring it back. The reason this is coming to council is because this is a very clear recommendation in the Bloomington Council of Plan. The Bloomington Council of Plan, and no, it's not very subtle, it says Bloomington should pass a complete streets ordinance. And that particularly caught my attention and several other council members, because it was a very simple thing we could do immediately to begin implementing the plan. And it also caught my attention, because to me, there's very, we do a lot of things that I'm very supportive of, but the one thing I think that we all agree on is very, very important is public safety. And complete streets are safe streets. They, they say that we are looking at all users of a street, so that everyone who uses a street can feel comfortable and be safe in that environment. And so, to me, this is a very important public safety step that we as a city can take. And that's, that's where, you know, I'm interested in most, is making sure that all people who use the road, pedestrians, bicyclists, automobile drivers, transit, can do so safely. That being said, I did have one, I guess I'll go ahead, we've got some more questions, but I'll go, is it okay if I make a motion now?
Make a motion, we still have...
I would like to make a motion that we pass the ordinance as presented, with the exception of 181.2. I'd like to strike that particular provision, and I'll provide a justification for that. 181.2 talks about removing non-classified streets, as long as they meet the minimum of standards as required in the manual of practice for the design of public improvements. Number one, I'm not sure that, you know, I prefer ordinances that are flexible, so removing streets from consideration, I'm not sure is necessarily, is necessary at this point. Second, if we're going to be reviewing all of our policies and procedures, certainly our manual of design within the city of Bloomington could actually state a, a non-classified street meets this, the requirements of this ordinance when X, Y, Z have been done. So, I don't see that as restricting it. I think that opens it up and allows you to do it, because it's kind of a circular logic there. Non-classified streets are exempt if they meet these criteria, but these criteria have to comply with complete streets. So, to me, logically, it makes sense to just remove that and to put that in the hands of the department in order to figure all of that out.
Okay. So, you've made the motion to approve this with the exception of 181.2.
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Further, you didn't want to follow up with any other points?
I think I've said that.
Okay. Yeah, just to, just to make it clear, Mayor Coos and I, and Mayor Charles Hales, no relation to David, of Portland, Oregon, had co-sponsored a resolution for, at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, that was unanimously approved, almost 300 mayors, Democrats, Republicans, whatever, throughout the United States, supporting complete streets, because they recognize multimodal cities aren't just a fad, they are the wave of the future. And frankly, if you've got people who are more comfortable being pedestrians and bicycles and using public transit, your roads last longer. So, for all kinds of reasons, this was not controversial, you know, at that level. Anyway, I'm going to turn to Alderman, excuse me, Alderman, Fruen, and Sage, in that order.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll redirect my comments in light of Amelia's comment. How does this remain consistent with the town of Normal, or does this create any kind of a inconsistency, Amelia? Or do you see this as...
I think they're identical, aren't they?
This, actually, I think what she's striking from 181.2, I believe, is different than the town of Normal. Now, I think this was, again, they mirrored each other, we tried, they don't exactly mirror each other, but in most of the general concepts now, they do, even down to exceptions and how those are done, reporting mechanisms. 181.2 was in, from an earlier standpoint, and yes, I think that is, that is a slight difference.
Well, the motion is to strike 81.1 and 81.2.
No, just 181.2.
181.2.
Okay. Consistency is important to me, and I think of a potential with north-south, with downtown and uptown, and Westland and ISU and different things, so I just want to be as consistent as we can with town of Normal. I'll leave it at that in light of the hour.
Thank you. Alderman Sage.
Yeah, and maybe to tag on to what, what Jim was saying, I'm not a fan of, of changing agenda items like this on the fly. I think we ask staff to do their work and come back. If it's something we want to revisit later, we can. But to your point, Jim, I mean, if we're looking to, if, if one of the goals here is, is to align and mirror what Normal has done, then we wouldn't change it. Jim, thanks, thanks for kind of clarifying the cost a little bit. I guess I have, I have, I have two, two questions or two points. Did I recall, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we, when we talked about this previously, did I recall that you said, "We're already doing everything that complete streets calls for"?
Staff feels comfortable that the pass, what we just passed is a bicycle master plan that conveys a transportation network, and the intention was to convey people and allow staff to be able to plan. The sidewalk master plan allowed for pedestrians to be able to do that. You know, as a street network, we've been looking at that. All that being said, there's, there's nothing wrong, and that's why staff is supportive of this, with us looking at this from that larger umbrella view. We were trying to take it from that standpoint of helping it to be as simplistic as possible, being off of what you as a council had passed, being as non-controversial as possible. But, but in this way, it is, again, it is, it's still easy to, to, easy to see that difference.
Okay. So, so again, I did, did some background reading on this, and, and one of the articles I read, if I understood it correctly, said that, that, because here's been one of my concerns, that this is, this is another, this is another mandate, this is another layer laying on top of what we already have in place. And I came across this section, and I didn't, I didn't know if you had, if you were familiar with it, that in 2010, the Department of Transportation, the Federal Department of Transportation issued a policy statement declaring its support for inclusion in federal-aided transportation projects. In other words, you had to have complete streets at the municipal level if you wanted to be considered for federal aid projects. Is that, is that, was I, was I reading that correctly?
The truth is, is that, that the federal government is moving toward this, and the states, over time, as it says in the memo, 30 states have adopted this, more continuing to. And this is the trend of transportation improvement, is not to be solely car-focused. So, this is, you know, this is something that is occurring across the nation, and so, yes, that, that is correct. That is the direction the federal government is going.
So, I guess to a point that was made here earlier, that this could cost less, this could cost more. In my nine years of being on the council, whenever we've been impacted by a federal or state mandate, I promise you, I've never seen it cost the city less than, than more. And, and so, to me, it seems a, a little bit, I don't know, unrealistic to suggest that this is going to cost less than, 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 than not. I mean, I'm still, I'm, I'm sitting here, I'm still not decided how I'm going to vote on this, but, but this is, this is a, a federal mandate, if, in the sense of, if you want federal money, you better be adopting, you better have adopted complete streets, or the federal government suggests, at least from the article I read, that they're going to withhold money from it. And so, that's a federal mandate, and if we're already doing everything by way of the other master plans, this seems to me to be redundant. But I, again, would appreciate hearing some other comments from us, some other Aldermen. Thank you.
One of the other pieces of feedback that is good to address, when you talk about less cost, just very briefly, 30-foot wide streets in residential areas, those, you know, whenever they, you talk about that, you know, you think about that, driving down that road, it allows for, you know, two, you know, eight-foot parking lanes, that's, you know, that takes away two eight-foot, that's 12, that's 16, 16 feet, then you're, you're left with 14 feet, two seven-foot driving lanes. Seven foot is, is enough for that, you know, that one, that one car, but you don't normally see people driving and trying to snake by there. So, it does allow for parking both sides, it allows for, for additional people to drive fast. Part of the concept is shrink it down. Do you have to have 30-foot driving lanes? Is that a requirement? If you have it less, people will drive, people will drive slower if you have less room. They'll be more careful because of the, that overall root concern we have about driving and comfortability.
Alderman, Miller, Wombley.
Okay. Jim, does this help us complete Cornelius' drive?
Not a bit.
No?
A little bit more commercial development out there, and then you can, that actually is what will drive Cornelius, commercial development.
Well, what I wanted to know, I, I, you know, I, I am in support of this, because I, I do believe that we, we have to accommodate just about, you know, anybody who's, who's here in town, anybody who could walk, you know, bicyclist and, you know, drivers as well, and also public transit. But I, what I want to know is, you know, by passing this, are you, is this going to prevent you from doing some things that you're going to, to do, let's say, next year in the future? Does it change how you're going to operate?
No, I appreciate that. It is, I should have said this earlier, it's opportunistic in nature, that whenever I talked about that, June 20th, nothing has changed from that. As, as we look at new roads, we'll consider this. As we resurface new road, resurface existing roads, we'll consider this. So, it's not, it's, again, what we're looking to do, as we hopefully will look at a five-year plan for, for what we're doing, resurfacing wise and all those types of things, and get that planning and funding level secured for a five-year period, then we can plan appropriately and design some of these things ahead of time. That would be helpful.
Alderwoman Schmidt.
Yes, okay. First of all, Jim, thanks very much for the work that you put into this and for the work you've done with the different constituencies. I know we tend to think about this as being all about bicycling, but it isn't. You know, I've certainly heard from plenty of people who have ADA requirements and people who either want to or need to walk, use public transportation, and, and I think that improves the quality of life all over. What I took out of the amendment that Amelia made to this, to her motion, is that we're saying that all streets could be considered for complete streets. And that was my understanding of what Normal did, too. They didn't exempt streets, they didn't say certain streets, streets weren't going to be considered. So, this seems to me to give us the most flexibility, and I, I'm, I'm, I, that's why I supported the motion. I think that we shouldn't disadvantage any street for any reason, but I don't see that this requires us to do anything other than, I mean, you said that in June, and I think you've reiterated that tonight, that this is, this is a lens through which we look at our streets when we're, when we're working with them. So, thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the Amelia's amendment makes it more consistent with Normal.
Correct.
Alderwoman Painter and then Lauer, and we will vote.
Well, I'm in support of this, because I think that it's an economic driver. I mean, if I recall correctly, didn't Mr. Tipturde from State Farm say that that was one of the reasons that he located his hub in Gilbert, Arizona, was because they had complete streets and they had, you know, multimodal transportation? And I think that it makes us very attractive to people that want to locate here for business reasons. And we have an aging community, and I think that there are more people that will be walking or taking the bus, so I think it's a real good idea.
Alderman Lauer, last word, and then we're going to vote.
I just, doesn't this require elevated curbing and reduced lane width in many, many areas? Our, I've talked at length with David about this, our community was not designed for this size of infrastructure, and we were going to, we are going to be impeding upon, in a number of areas, if we go forward with this, this type requirement. There's nothing to say that we can't put in a bike lane, we can't put in a bench here or there, but when we get into allowing somebody to force a template upon us, then it reduces the amount of flexibility we have to plan our own community.
And keeping in mind, this is the council driving, saying we're going to use this template. So, so as that policy-level governance...
And that is my point.
That, that is what we're, what we're looking to do. We want to be known as that community, and that's what we're driving towards.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much at this point. Obviously, aye. Ayes in favor of this motion, that was made by Alderwoman Burgess, seconded by Alderwoman Schmidt. Okay. I think, oh, okay. Still waiting. Okay. Right. The motion carries seven to two. There are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Sage and Alderman Lauer.
Okay. Thank you very much. We move on next to consideration of approving a resolution to reject the assistance request from Riverside Lodging, Bloomington LLC, Downtown Redevelopment Partners. And, now, we do have 15-minute discussions. This might be where, if the council, we might not need to have the 15 minutes. Mr. Hales, if you could, and Mr. Jurgen can just clarify, this is just consistent putting into writing what we all talked about a week or so ago.
And what Steve Friedman, in his letter...
Correct, I'm sorry.
...listed in the way of recommendation.
Fiscal 2016 year-end. And we'll start with City Manager Hales and Patty Lynn Silver.
Did Patty Lynn go home? No, she, she'll be here. Let me just mention, I very much appreciate Patty Lynn and her staff for putting together this fiscal year 2016 year-end financial update. Keep in mind that these are not audited year-end numbers, but one thing that is driving tonight's presentation, as well as the next item, fiscal year 2016 budget amendments, that as we try to work on finalizing the financial statements for fiscal year 2016, we are up against a deadline to close out any and all final budget amendments to make retroactive. So, they've put in considerable time, there is a positive... So they've put in considerable time, there is a positive story here, but it is also one that is kind of one-time only because of unique circumstances and some very interesting lessons learned through the solid waste discussions we've had. So with that, Patty, if you're ready for-
Yes, I am. I'm sorry about that. Stuck out for a minute. Most of you have received the updated copy that has the final numbers in it and some final tweaking on the descriptions, but, and I know it's late, but I'm gonna try to hit just the high points for you guys. It's always good to go over the year-end and see how the budget panned out, and so I'm just gonna jump in. Let's see if I can get a slide here. So, I'm sorry, so once after 9:30, you know, it's a little difficult to talk about the numbers, but I'm gonna do my best for you guys. I had a grandbaby's birthday over the weekend, so still recuperating. So as you can see, the city overall, with all the funds, had almost a $5 million surplus. And you can see that at the bottom here at the $4.9 million. And the general fund, of course, which is usually the most interest and 50% of the city's operations, had a $4.2 million surplus, which we'll get into more detail in the next slide. We also had a couple of, subscript two is for the two funds here that had the, they're relying on their fund balance, so that's why they look like they're negative, because this is just current year operations. And then I wanted to point out, which will be a good story coming up, is the solid waste fund, which had a positive outcome this year. And the capital improvement fund and the state motor fuel tax, that's just the timing of those capital projects. And so they did end the year with a little bit of net income, but it will be spent in this current year. And we had some good claims activity on the employee and retiree health insurance, and we'll talk about the Coliseum as well. These numbers that you're seeing here tonight are already reflective of the budget transfer, that is the next item on the agenda. So we went ahead and put those numbers in there, so if that was not to pass, the surplus would be higher. This slide is the general fund detail that we were talking about. And on just the high points on the revenue, if you remember, we adopted the sales tax in July, but it didn't become effective until January 1st. On January 1st, our year-end, our year-end ends on April 30th, and so we had four months of revenue that came in that was really technically not in the budget because the sales taxes adopted after we adopted the budget. So 1.5 of the 4.2 in the general fund is just the sales tax. We had some positive returns in our other taxes that you can see there, but we had some slight underages in charges for services. So net-net, we had a positive return on revenues. And then if you look down here, and I'm on page four, if you guys are following along, we had quite a bit of savings on the expenditure side as well. Salary benefits and overtime are down 2.2 million. There was quite a few vacancies, I think 11 in total for both police and fire. Those positions are about $100,000 a year for a full year with salary and benefits, so that's 1.1 million right there. Their overtime was also down in many cases, and then the corresponding other benefits were down. So you have quite a bit of savings in the salary benefits and overtime. We also had another good return with fuel and oil. The warm winter, we used a lot less salt, and our utilities are down as on trend market. We've, we're starting to see a positive return in vehicle repair because we have, this is almost our fifth year of capital lease program where we've been replacing equipment regularly. So we're starting to see a positive return in vehicle repair. The bad debt for ambulance, we're still trying to verify that, but we believe that that is also due to Obama, the Affordable Healthcare Act, where as we were writing off many people who had no insurance, we are at least now receiving some dollars for those that are using the city ambulance services that are covered under the Affordable Healthcare Act. The other expenditures there that look to be over, a million dollars of that 1.9 is related to the sales tax that we earned from January through April, which we paid a portion in McLean County, and we transferred a portion that belonged to Rhodes over into the capital improvement fund. So this is the total savings in the general fund, and it's a little easier to look at it like this, I think, this slide. But as you can see, we opened here with a $12 million fund balance, and we will hopefully end the year after audit with the 16.2 million. And there's a portion of this that is restricted for the police and fire pension fund, the utility tax, which we are transferring over currently. I don't know if you want me to stop on the general fund, if you have any questions, you want me to just keep moving along? I know it's kind of a lot of information, so I will keep going.
Immediate questions, though. Keep going.
Okay, just let me know. The water fund has quite a bit of fund balance. We had the new water director without the engineering services until the end of the year, so he really wasn't able to move forward with his capital projects. But as you know, this fund has been accumulating savings for that capital, and so 6.3 million is unused, but we, we see that going very fast in '17, '18, and '19. The sewer fund balance, no huge changes there. They did use some of their fund balance and got through some work this year. Stormwater didn't have a lot to use in terms of capital, they didn't have a lot of money, so they just really broke even. And then the solid waste is really, in my mind, as I had expressed to Maria, the Cinderella story. We've just talked and talked and talked about solid waste, and I see this as such a major positive. If you remember, we adopted a deficit budget of the 9.41, 941,000, and council decided after that that they would have the budget task force and so on and so on, and you ended up cutting a level of service there. Sorry. I didn't mean to minimize all that work, but, so the level of service was cut, and when the level of service was cut, we thought perhaps that maybe moving that one crew, which was about $600,000, would be the savings. But if you look at the next slide, you can see that, yes, that crew was moved for the 621,000, but the tipping fee and the tonnage is also way down, about 300,000. The lease principal and interest, that was actually financed, we didn't execute the lease until after the year-end. Fuel is down because you're making, I guess, less runs for the bulk, and there's some savings in the toters. So I think this is just one of those examples where, you know, I think you joked in the past, we can't cut Zumba. This was something that I think was a win-win all the way around. You have people that were placed through attrition, there were no layoffs. The level of service was changed, but I don't think the sky fell. I'm sure you guys heard more about it than I did, but, and a million dollars worth of savings, that credit really belongs to Jim Karge and Steve Rasmussen, the solid waste managers, to even manage their overtime and their seasonal. So I think this is an incredibly positive story. I think it certainly shows what we can do when we put our heads together. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. And that does include the 1.4 million transfer that we would normally fund, but we were looking at a 2.5 million deficit for that year, if you add that 940 on. So we have stopped certainly, you know, the growing subsidy in that fund, you know, overtime, as expenditures increase in that fund, that may increase, but quite a bit of work has been done. And I really, again, wanted to just publicly thank the Public Works Department and, and the solid waste folks. I think they've done a great job, and they hit that mark, they hit more than that mark. And then I have a huge appendix for you, I won't get into all of that, there's a lot of good information in there, but the stories are really positive, and I don't often get to give you guys that, that kind of information, so well done all the way around.
Questions, comments of Patty Lynn? I think you summed it up. Always nice to see you when you've got good news.
Thank you. It was fun.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. So we will move right along to considering an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2016 budget amendment ordinance. And gonna go ahead, Patty Lynn?
Well, what you just saw was the effect of those budget transfers on your financials, and the memo in here is pretty self-explanatory. We try to clear up any deficit balances that are there, and in the case of the Coliseum, it was just cleaning up their year-end and some legacy costs that were there. So unless you have any other questions for me.
Question? Comment? So Patty Lynn, this is, this is more a comment for the council rather than, than for you, but I do notice that we have a need to transfer in and cover a deficit in the golf operations of 367,000 plus.
I should clarify that.
If memory serves me right, I think this is, I know this is at least the second year in a row when we've had a significant, and I want to say a six-figure transfer into the golf fund to cover, cover a deficit, I think. My point is, and maybe to echo some of the conversation that we had earlier about, about reducing our costs, I mean, the reality is, we heard time and time again, the golf pays for itself, you know, revenues cover the expenses. I'm not an accountant, but I'm pretty sure when we have to transfer money in, it's not covering its expenses. And so, but my point is, is until, until this council, again, tagging on to some of the conversation we had earlier, until we're willing to tackle some, some expense reductions up here, we're, again, we're gonna find ourselves in fairly short order, in a couple years, of being back in a situation where, where our expenses could potentially exceed our revenues. And so, again, this is just indicative of a lack of our commitment to do that as a council, to, to find some, some areas where we can reduce costs.
And I, my apologies, I should have clarified that. We over-contributed to get them up to 15%. There was a deficit balance, but we did over-contribute to get them up to that 15% fund balance mark where they should be. So it is, it is the same scenario where really Highland is, is the one, and the others earn, and so the net of that still caused a deficit balance, and then we, we transferred the deficit, or we will be asking to transfer the deficit. But then really, every fund should have a 15% fund balance in it. We can't do it in quite solid waste yet, but we're getting there in each fund, so that's just kind of our pattern of funding.
So the operating loss was lower than that?
Oh, yes. Yes, then the operating loss of the three was, I think it was around, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, I think it was around $10,000 in that.
Oh, so they did come, so the operating came close to covering its cost?
Yes.
It's that, we wanted them to have some money in reserve?
Yes, because they need some capital peers. Our financial policies, you know, require us to have 10% to 15% fund balance, so we really needed to do that. And when we have a year with a surplus, we try to at least hit the smaller funds to try to get the money over there. So it's not as significant as it looks, and I apologize, I should have made that clear.
Alderman. I just wanted to make a comment, and I appreciate your, your point there, and I think you're absolutely right. And I wanna, I wanna clarify that I think that we need to look a little deeper than we have been. And Jim and I have looked at some items in the golf program, and I think there are savings to be made. I think it can be, I, let me correct myself, I know it can be made to break even. I know we can do that. And I, I know we can do that without closing a golf course. And so it's a big benefit, we've got a lot of amenities, and, and the folks that are using those should be paid for them. And I don't, I don't, I don't agree with taking money out of the general fund to, to fund a lot of these amenities, you know that. But I, I know that with proper management, proper leadership, that we can find a way to make these things happen. So I want to be positive about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, did we have a motion?
We don't, yeah.
Do we have a motion to accept the budget?
We do have a motion now.
Oh, I do. Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, is there a second?
We're in next one.
Yeah.
Sure.
Seconded by Alderwoman Hales. Any further discussion, questions, comments on this? Okay, so the budget amendment as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, we have nine to zero, no nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, Patty Lynn. Thanks, David, for your hard work on this. And we're gonna go ahead and start with the city manager's discussion?
Just very briefly, the directors and I and Steve had a great department head retreat last Friday, in part, it was following up on some high-level goals and initiatives the South, the council has provided for us going forward this year, and also will, there was some, I think, good ideas that came out of that for the upcoming council retreat, but give you more of a report on that later. I also want to thank Steve and all those on the city staff that helped with getting ready for the Jazz event and concert, and you'll see more on the power washing that was done, because as we get back into the five-year CIP discussion, which will be on September 12th, we want to build into the budget, at least for your consideration, what can be, continue on a year-to-year basis to help address that issue of cleanliness downtown, but also, you know, what could be an ongoing source of revenue to help pay for that? Is that from the city or other sources? But I think it was a great example of how, with some extra expenditures, we can continue to do more to just have the downtown be a very inviting, and, and two, with the Saturday and Sunday pickup, we want to make sure that after the big events, farmer's market, the downtown bar entertainment, et cetera, that we just don't leave all that material until Monday to clean up. We've heard many, many complaints, so that is kind of an enhanced level of service. It will cost the city more going forward, but we think it's critical, given the many, many complaints that come in and, and the like, that it wasn't a seven-day service with the greater amount of activity that is taking place downtown on Saturday and Sunday. So we appreciate all those efforts and some of those new initiatives, so thank you very much.
Thank you. First thing I want to do is make sure everybody, I believe someone will do it earlier, we have the Americans Veterans Traveling Tribute Memorial, and that's August 24th through the 28th, and the 26th is one of the evenings where we have the opening ceremony. So I'd certainly like to invite everyone to attend. If you've been to the one in Washington, it's certainly very moving, and it's really great that we're gonna be able to have this here in our community. I'd also like to, as Mr. Hales mentioned, thank the council and James Gaston for taking the lead on what was an extremely successful event in downtown Bloomington, and we certainly hope that we continue to have festivals like that, which bring people into our downtown, have a good time, spend some money, help create jobs. And Normal has done that, and, you know, we're doing a version of it as well.
And Mayor, I heard some reports that there was an elected official that was very active in dancing down there, and really got into the moves and that, so let's see, was that yourself?
Yeah, several people said, "Don't quit my day job." So, yeah, that was, yeah, it was, it was fun. And also, I want to thank Mr. Hales and Patty Lynn Silva for, you know, obviously, strong fiscal management, prudent management for us to have a deficit. And I know some of it is because we didn't have Snowmageddon, I know there's some other things, but obviously, when you've got this much of a surplus, and now this adds to our, you know, to our reserves, we now exceed our 15% in the general fund and reserves, so thank you both very much. That's all I have. Alderwoman Burgess.
Two things. First, we were promised a song, Tom, the very beginning of this meeting, just putting that out there. Number two, Emboka asked me about this, so I thought I'd go ahead and share it with the rest of the council, because you all may have the same question. I recused on 7H. This is an item that has in some form or another been to council before, and I did not recuse. There's just been a change in circumstance where there is now a conflict where there wasn't one before. So just, if you have any questions, let me know, but just wanted to put that out there in case anyone else was questioning why that was.
All right. Anybody else?
Mayor, I think before we get a motion to adjourn, if you want a song, maybe the song could be "Happy Birthday" for Alderman Kevin Lauer.
Oh, happy birthday!
Today's his birthday, so the council can lead off on that if you want to-
Are you 39 again?
Yeah. I'll dance to that one, but just not if you're-
Fair enough. Okay.
What a way to celebrate your birthday!
Five-hour meeting, dude!
I think it's time to go.
It's time to go. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, seconded by Alderwoman Black, all in favor, seen if I'm saying aye. Okay, thank you very much.